Okay, is everybody ready, council? Bill, we ready for the? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order today's date is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. Welcome to everybody who's in the audience today. And we'll be deviating from this agenda from time to time to help accommodate and expedite the agenda itself. And anybody will have an opportunity to come and speak, and then we'll try to do that in an orderly manner. But we're going to deviate from it just a little bit, but to please have a little patience as we move forward and hear from everybody who would like to speak with respect to whatever issue you have this evening. Would everyone please take the roll call plan?
Johnson?
Here.
Motley?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Deondich?
Present.
Bachschneider?
Here.
Freedle?
Here.
Puffy?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We moved to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. And this part of the agenda is anyone from the public would like to speak, will be able to come forward to do so. But before we do that, I'm going to ask that you please be seated for a few minutes. And I'm going to bring, I've asked Matt Reed, our engineer of record, and our Public Works Director Jim Rosvidt to come up and give us a little synopsis of what transpired over the course of the last couple of weeks with respect to the flooding. And if you're here for that, please have your patience there. And if you're for another matter, you certainly will have the opportunity to come and speak then, too. So first of all, I would like to bring out both Matt Reed and Jim Rosvidt. If you just give a little synopsis of what happened, the actions that we took during the flood and the challenges that the crew had with respect to that. Jim Rosvidt, our Public Works Director, and Matt Reed, our engineer of record, and welcome. Thanks for coming this evening. And I say to the majority of people here are concerned about the flooding issues in respect of what was transpired and looking for what action the city did take, what the action the city will probably have to take in the future, and what we're going to try to do to help mitigate and rectify the issues that was experienced by the residents here today. So Jim?
Good evening. Like everyone's aware, we're running into flooding issues. And I guess I just want to cover kind of a synopsis of why this isn't happening and what's going on. We don't have all the answers. A lot of us have it. It's been something that's been ongoing for years. There was a lot of, I wouldn't say neglect, but the funds weren't there. There's a lot of old infrastructure, as I've repeated over and over since the few years I've been here. And we're struggling with it. As far as, I personally believe a lot of this comes from just years of, you know, it's aged. It's everything, we're looking at 80, 90, 100 years old, old clay tile, heavy rains. And the thing they did was they always put the steam, the water, and the sanitary sewer together. So none of them sat very deep. Well, as you take the steam out of the equation, you've got about, my understanding is around 3,000 steam vaults in the city that also tie into sanitary sewers for condensation lines, things like that. But like I say, they weren't very deep. Now, as the steam goes away, we lose that heat in the ground also. And you see more of this where the ground's shifting, the frost is moving around, and the pipes aren't holding up even more. And it's not just ours, it's also residential. I know we've dealt with a lot of houses, a lot of broken pipelines, so pipes that have settled, houses that have settled in the city. But as far as what happened last week was all of our lift stations were running. We ran at full capacity, pretty much. We have 17 active lift stations. They run two pumps each in them. They took everything they had. Nothing was shut down. Nothing was broke down. We ran additional pumps to run bypass. And what that actually consists of, well, let me back up. What we do first is we put the wastewater treatment plant in a bypass mode. So when we get an alarm system at our lift stations, and they start coming up, and we know we're going to get overwhelmed, we call the wastewater treatment plant. They put it into a bypass mode where it doesn't treat any water. And that water is discharged, and then we report that to the MTCA. And so we're relieving, try to relieve some of that head pressure that's coming down on us instead of treating it. We did have room in our retention ponds and that, but we still got to open them early to relieve that because I believe the city's overwhelmed, and it gets more overwhelmed every year. We do also run additional pumps at these lift stations. So if you see a pump out there on the back of a truck or diesel pump running, what that's doing, it's also relieving. At the lift station, we pump it out onto the ground, or we pump it into a storm sewer that's next to it. And that's another way of us relieving. So we'll run additional pumps. So there wasn't a problem of us, of anything failing on our end. It's just being overwhelmed. And it's the amount that comes down in the amount of time it comes down in. I do feel like we're making strides. Last year, I felt like we were a lot more flooded out. Unfortunately, it seemed like more were flooded this go-around. Why that is, you know, there's not an answer. But we're doing maintenance every day. We're jetting lines, cleaning lines, televising lines, doing ditching projects, well, logging to get to those ditching projects, changing culverts, everything we can do to accommodate and get this water relieved out of the city and out from under the streets.
Good evening, Mayor. I can just piggyback onto what Jim said. It really, you hear him say the word overwhelmed. And that really comes down to the city's infrastructure aging and the amount of infiltration and inflow. And what that means is stormwater going into our stormwater and our sanitary sewer systems. There's a lot of ways it gets in there. It gets in there through broken pipes. It gets in there through manholes. It gets in there through steam vaults. It just, there's a lot of different ways it's getting in there. The older this stuff gets, the more decrepit it becomes, and the more I and I we get. I saw a photo of the outlet pipes, of the pipe that is at the very bottom of the hill that everything runs out of, out of the storm sewer system during these last storms. The water in the outlet ditch was above the top of the pipe of the outlet to the city storm sewer system. So in essence, there's really nowhere for the water to go. It just, when you get that much water in that short of time, as Jim said, it overwhelms the system. And so in that situation, that is a lot of why. And as soon as they open up the discharge, or the bypass on the wastewater treatment plant, that ends up adding more water to that ditch because they go to the same area. So it really is a function of the extreme storm events that we've had the last couple of years, as well as the old and aging infrastructure. And we are, the city has taken a number of steps in the last several years. Jim mentioned ditching. You can see his crews out there ditching, trying to get some of that surface runoff back into the ditches where they're supposed to go and run downstream. There's been infrastructure projects. They're expensive, but they're necessary. There's been, we've started looking at the I and I problem in pretty serious depth. There's been a few grant programs that the city's been able to get money from to study the storm sewer system, to study the sanitary sewer system. We're going to be doing smoke testing, which is specifically designed to identify sources of infiltration and inflow that's coming up this summer. So there's ongoing efforts that the city is trying to do to come up with, as well as just doing fixes. Jim's crews are fixing manholes. He mentioned all that already, so I'm not going to repeat it. But it just really comes down to when, even if we designed a brand-new storm sewer system today, when we get storm sewer, or when we get rain events like we've seen in the last couple of years, we still wouldn't, not all the water would go into the pipes. You'd still see flooded streets. You'd still, it just, economically, you can't design for those high rain events. So that's really what I see in working for the city for the past 12 or 13 years and working with Jim's crews. And there's been some very good efforts on behalf of the citizens and in the city to try and figure these problems out. It's ongoing, and there's going to continue to work on it. So I don't know if that helps. I know it doesn't ease the pain of when backups happen. But it is, it's ongoing, and work is continuing to hopefully improve down the road.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jim. And just a couple of questions before we go to the elected body and then to the general public. So what advice can you give? And maybe many of these residents and business owners in the audience have already taken these steps. What steps can be taken by the homeowner to help try to alleviate what they've experienced? Or what can be done to prevent or help mitigate at least the, reduce the adversity of the event?
So depending on what the problem is, if they're having problems with water coming in through the basement, if they're coming in through the old steam connections, if it's backing up in the sanitary sewer, there's different things. I'm not sure what all the problems are. But in the case of the sanitary sewer, one of the things that can be done is if you can access your service line and put a check valve on it, so a backflow preventer so that water doesn't push up into the sewer. That's one option. Certainly, if it's water coming into the basement, if you don't have a sump pump, getting a sump pump installed, getting drain tile installed. I know none of that's inexpensive. It's all, and it's a lot of work, and it's not cheap. But that are some of the things. If you don't have gutters on your house, if the ground is sloped towards your house and everything's coming in towards the basement, that's all surface stuff. If it's backups through your sump in the basement or backup through the sanitary line, really, the backflow preventer is the best thing you can do to help prevent that coming in. I would, this is a discussion for a different day, but if people do have sump pumps hooked up to their sanitary sewer line, that you can unhook that and run it out into your yard like it's supposed to be. That would be another way to help prevent it because everybody's sump pumps kick on, and that just takes up more capacity of the sanitary sewer or the storm sewer, quite frankly. So those are some other things you could look at.
So thank you. If you just hold, just for a couple of minutes, it will go around to the council. Does any council have any questions, comments, that they'd like to make at this time? Counselor Johnson, and then we'll go to Counselor Motley, and then over to Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here this evening and giving a short explanation. I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. Please make sure your voices are heard. I had minor flooding in my basement, too, as well. I saw what many of you were going through, and I apologize. This is, I will reiterate, this is what deferred maintenance gets us. It's what deferred maintenance gets us on our water systems, our sewer systems, our vehicles, our roads, everything. The more we put off fixing or buying new, the worse this gets. And so this council has done a relatively good job of trying to work on this sewer system, but there's a number of other things that we can do better on. So I appreciate everybody being here. Appreciate your comments, and I will be taking some notes. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Motley?
I would also have to kind of segue off Counselor Johnson on a lot of that. Thank you guys for coming. We need to hear from you for everything. I wish the council chambers were filled like this every single Tuesday night. And also, thank you, Jim and Matt, for coming. My thought is, I feel for the taxpayers, and you see stuff online and whatnot. And you, I appreciate you telling Matt taxpayers what they can do to try to alleviate some of this ongoing big problems that they're having. What do you tell somebody who's done all that, and they're feeling pretty hopeless right now? Like, is there something more that we can offer them? Because I know there's people out there that have this stuff and have put in the effort and the money to get it fixed, and it's still failing. Is there any extra advice we can give? Because we can't fix the problems fast enough. We've had failed infrastructure that was neglected many years ago that is hitting us like a freight train right now. What do you tell the taxpayer in the future? Just to give them hope or something that they already have existing things trying to take out the water?
Yeah, that's a tough one because, you know, I feel for it as well. I've had water, been my basement at home as well. Just know, I know it's not a lot of consolants, but the city is working on trying to fix the problem. It's a very, very large problem. And it can't be fixed overnight. And when we get those type of rain events, it really is Mother Nature overwhelming the system. But I guess rest assured that the city is doing what they can now and will continue to do what they're doing, carrying into the future to try to eliminate these problems. And we're really trying to focus on, and again, we're going to hear some stuff tonight, I think, that will hopefully be good, some good feedback for us because we're trying to prioritize where the worst areas are, and so we can get to those first. So again, money becomes an issue, but we're continuing to try and find ways, find money, find funds, find everything to correct the problem.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Matt and Jim. And thank you for all the residents that are here. This is not a pleasant situation at all. This is the third time we've had it as well. And I just, I've got a couple of questions, if you guys don't mind. So the first question I have is, are there, maybe we'll find out as people get up and speak. Are there certain sections of town that the majority of these issues happened? That I don't know if people have reported it or they're just here tonight to voice what happened to them and where they live, what their address is. But have you guys noticed any specific targeted sections in the city that were overwhelmed the most?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe north side, we did quite a bit of ditching last year. We've got more to do, and we're doing some ditching work with the state for storm sewers, which will relieve a lot of that. But we do have four main trunks that run, they basically cover probably from six, from Holiday Gas Station going south out of the city. And those all tie in, the storm sewers tie into four lines that are 72-inch in diamers. They were put in in the 40s. They're old, they're brick tile. Like I say, we're working on some issues with them. But that's probably six, eight miles of pipe that takes everything out the south side of the city. Two of the pipes run under the mall. Two run alongside of Ranger Mental Health, 13th Street area over there. And they pull everything from that south side downtown area and work their way out.
It's a primary junction for those?
For those four, storm. To take whatever water, you know, standing water, anything out of the streets to relieve the.
I'm saying, do they come together in one place? Why this?
Yes.
So where is that?
Down outside the wastewater treatment plant.
Please continue, Jim.
So, and back there, we also been ditching, I would say, logging. I mean, we've done a lot back there. We couldn't even access the ditches to clean them. First, we had to log them and grub them and get everything, and then make access points because the elevations and the steepness of the ditches, you couldn't even access. But there were years of trees and growth and stuff in there. So that's stuff we've been working on. There's five, I believe there's five ditches that take all our storm sewers, all our stormwater out of the city. And we've been working on all five of them in the three and a half years that I've been here, trying to take a lot of that and relieve that. We still got a lot, a long way to go. We've still got some more grubbing and tree cutting. But we get overwhelmed in another area, and that goes to the back burner. But we are making progress. Unfortunately, it's a slow progress. We've asked for some funding from FEMA and things like that. It just hasn't been there, and it's expensive. We need new culverts. We need, you know, it's time, material. It's very costly, and that's, we're doing what we can with what we have.
Okay, so is it, thank you for that. Is it safe to say then you're, this majority of what people have experienced would be on the south side? Because those lines that are coming, do they, where's the origination? Would it be like around Chestnut Street? Or of the lines that are running then south? Those four lines you were talking, or how many lines?
Some come from up by, off 6th Avenue, up by the Holiday. But I know there is still problems up on the north side of town. And I know, over the years, I feel that things have changed geographically in the city, too, where Target used to be basically a wetland. The railroad grade used to have ditches on both sides of it. There were a lot of locations that have changed over the years, and that didn't absorb holding water and things like that. So, and like I say, I've been here three and a half years, but I've been involved with this type of work for 30 years. So I'm very familiar with it. But there's a lot of variables that we're sitting in.
And I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I'm just going to go down a couple more questions.
Counselor Paulson?
If that's okay. So the, I guess why I was asking that is the work that's been performed on 8th Avenue, 13th Street, and now on the alleyways, would that possibly be a contributing factor to any potential collapse of any, or erosion of any of the stormwater systems? As new piping is being put in, fitting into the old, or whatever, going into the old system, would that be pushing or helping erode or collapse or damage some of the existing areas on the south side that probably were pretty affected?
I would say no.
Okay.
Up on the 8th Avenue project, for example, the only work that was done on sanitary up there was a couple of sanitary sewer crossings at the alleys.
How about 8th South?
8th South. 8th Street or 8?
Well, 8th Avenue.
8th Avenue.
And 8th, 8th and 8th?
Yeah, that's who I'm talking about.
Okay.
So we didn't do any real sanitary sewer work. There isn't any that runs along 8th Avenue. It's all in the alleys crossing. So all we did was fix the crossings. The storm sewer is essentially the same as it was before.
Okay, and thank you for that, Matt. And then, real quick, on the steam infrastructure, when steam was shut off, and a lot of people, sidewalks shifted, alleys shifted, they have a lot of sinkholes happening, could that be a contributing factor to maybe, like on 12th Street South, where they have the sinkhole, and you had to repair the storm sewer pipe there? Would that be a contributing factor? I guess I'm just trying to check off, like, what is, we have a problem. There's obviously a problem because none of us have, in the 20 years that I've lived here, have ever had three instances where not only three and a half feet of sewage last year, but now over probably eight, 10 inches Monday night and Fri, was it Monday and Friday? And then again, I don't, we've had three different instances. We've got transfer pumps, we're pumping, where the floor drain won't work. It's coming up from the actual floor itself. We don't know how to get rid of it, buckets. I mean, I feel like I see a lot of shaking of heads. This is what, so we have a problem. There's something wrong. Even if you have a sump pump, it's not keeping up. So I'm trying to say, what can we do? Can we do scoping, sonogram? Is there something called sonar? Is there a sonar capability where we could say, hey, maybe where this, a lot of the steam is shut off, if you've seen alleys or streets shifting, could we look at that? Because I feel like there is, there's something more than just an excess amount of rain, in my opinion.
Mayor? Matt?
I know maybe this, the root of the problem still is the volume of rain that we're getting in a short period of time. I'm not suggesting that we don't need improvements to the infrastructure, but stuff that's coming up through the floor and things like that, that's, a lot of that might be coming out of the ground. The ground's getting saturated. The water table comes up for a short period of time, and then as it goes, it goes down. Drain tile around the basement, that's what that's for. I'm not saying that's all of it. And again, I don't know all of the specific instances that everybody's having problems with. I'm sure it's a multitude of many different sources where they're having problems. But to answer your question about the steam, maybe? I really don't know. I mean, the steam lines have been there. They're not working at the time. So maybe some of the, there are some condensate lines tied into the sewer that I know Public Utilities and the city crews have been. have been going in and trying to cut those off or plug them so that we're not getting all that extra. But then the water's gonna go right in. It's just gonna sit in the steam lines. Really, what needs to happen is the steam lines need to come out. And we're doing that as projects, as we're doing projects. But again, it's expensive. So to, if we want to go through and take out every steam vault and every steam pipe in town, that's certainly an option. But it's gonna cost millions and millions and millions of dollars to do that. So again, trying to identify, which is why I think what you were suggesting, trying to identify these sources, some of the smoke testing that we're talking about, that will identify some of these problems. You'll see smoke coming out of the ground. So, or hopefully not out of anybody's place.
That's all I have. I just, I really think it's imperative that we try to explore and try to figure out what the source is for the majority of what's happening. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilor Paulson. Um, Matt, Jim, thank you. I'm gonna have to call you back up for a couple more, maybe technical questions. But thank you for, for appearing this evening and taking the time. And so we're gonna be talking to some of the residents here and coming up and hearing your story and your testimony and things of that nature. I just want to say, uh, thank you for calling me and I'm sure you called some of the other councils. I've been to a number of your homes and participated in uh, part of the process of trying to help you alleviate some of the problems in your basements. My brother's basement had water. I had water. At a new, uh, used house I bought up on Northside, same deal. It's unfortunate that this has happened. We're trying to do everything we can to try to mitigate this. So that being said, what I'd like you to do is as you come forward, turn the light on to green. And if you have some question or comment that we can answer, if we can answer, we'll have Matt or, or Jim answer the question for you. But we ask that you uh, try to remain as calm as you can with respect to this. And I know you're very, very frustrated. We'll try to get through this and see what can be done. Uh, please come forward. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, my name is Kathy Katie. I'm a taxpayer in Virginia and my home has been flooded three times and we live on the north side. Um, before others speak, I just want to say, please really listen to us. I certainly don't need any lectures from any of you. I was flooded last year and twice this year and I live on the north side. I am begging you to quit buying equipment, put the million you give to ITMAC and cut the library budget. No new buildings, no new hires, and put this money into fixing our infrastructure. At $1,500 deductible every time I get sewer backup, that's a lot. Residents are mad and many taxpayers are talking about leaving Virginia. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Kathy. Hey, uh, good evening and welcome to the council meeting. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Shelley Babaraki. I live in the Veterans Edition. Got some help from our mayor on Monday night. Appreciate that. Um, I just have a couple of questions. I wasn't initially gonna talk because I'm very emotional about this. Um, how much is the penalty for opening up the valve? Because if 150 residents in Virginia alone got hit, only 150, that's $3 million. So if you open up this valve all the way and then you get penalized for it, is it more than $3 million?
Well, I, well, what I can say to Ms. Babaraki is that we don't know. It's an investigation that we are required by law to report it to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency takes into account the totality of the circumstances as to what transpired and what emergency action the city has to take in order to help prevent, uh, to make, ensure that the, the health and safety of the residents that live there. And so they take that into account as they decide whether or not they are gonna take any action with respect to that. So they can find, you know, uh, it could be a significant fine, one-time fine, could fine per event, which may be. But they don't normally, it's not something that's automatic. They look at it, if it's an emergency circumstance in which it's, it's uh, it's, it's uh, compromised in the health and safety of the residents or the business community, you know, they take that into account. So, but we're required by law to, uh, report it. They may or may not investigate it.
Well, I would also like to receive money for other people's sewage that I received in my basement, just like I pay the city for my sewage. And then the other thing that I'm wondering is, if these steam lines are the problem, like you can't decide where's the worst problem? My daughter has poop from somebody else stuck under her floor and we have no idea how we're gonna get it fixed besides ripping it out. And so what is important to me is a lot different of importance to anyone else. But I know every single one of you, number one most important is your family. And if you cannot provide a home and everything else, then you can't live here. I used to be proud to live here. Now I can't wait until we can move. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and before we continue, I just want to let you know, if you haven't received a notice or haven't seen the notice in the paper, if you've experienced some loss, uh, you know, need some, uh, uh, you've had some damage and some property that you, that you can't salvage, uh, we're gonna do the same thing. Or we're gonna, you put it on the curb and you call, we're gonna give a number to call and we'll come in and pick that up. So we're gonna start that program uh, soon. And then we'll, we'll take a break during the 4th of July weekend and after that we'll resume that. So we'll give you the number later on uh, to move forward. If you have any other questions about that, uh, we'll, we'll be coordinating that through our Public Works Department. Uh, thank you. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
Good evening, council members. My name is Teresa Geiselman and I'm here tonight with fellow residents who have been seriously impacted by recent failures in our city's sewer system. On June 16th and again on June 20th of this year, Virginia received about three to 3.5 inches of rain each night. Last summer, on June 17th, 2024, we had even more rain. During all three of these events, many residents experienced severe sewer backups. Raw sewage coming through the basement drains with water levels ranging to a few, from a few feet, few inches to over a foot. These were not minor inconveniences. These were destructive, costly and traumatic events for homeowners. What's especially concerning, that is for 25 years, many of us here have lived in our homes more than 25 years. Most of these same homes have never experienced any sewer backups, even during much heavier storms. So we ask, what has changed? This is not a matter of a leak, of leaky basements or individual homeowner neglect. Many of us have functioning sump pumps, check valves, and have taken proactive steps to prevent, protect our homes. Yet none of these can prevent sewage from entering when the city's system fails. We're not here to place blame. We're here to demand answers and solutions. The damages we are dealing with are a direct result of failure in the city's sewer infrastructure or maintenance. We are asking this council to investigate the cause, communicate openly with affected, affected residents and take immediate steps to prevent future backups. And I was gonna say, thank you for your time and for hearing our concerns, but I do have to address a couple of things that um, Mr. Rotz, Rotfitz has said, um, and even Matt Reed. And, and they're really nice guys, you know? We're all members of the same community. I went in very distressed to speak with Mr. Rotfitz on Monday morning and he told me that the release valve was not um, put in place. It was not opened because he said the instrumentation did not indicate this.
No, I didn't say that.
You did tell me that. Mm-hmm. I, I went home directly to my husband, who's an engineer, who has done this. I went home immediately and told him that. And, and he provided some real nice ideas for me and, and he's a nice guy. He really provided some great ideas about, about sump pumps and about um, you know, all these other solutions that most of us already have in place. And, and he, he's a wealth of information, you know, that we could put churney balls in, into our sewer entries in our house and inflate them at the time of a flood. But my husband let me know, um, you know, that was the one thing we didn't have that, that Mr. Rotfitz, Rotfitz offered. Um, but those churney balls that you inflate in your sewer, if the flood already starts and you can't inflate them, you know, you can't inflate that into your sewer hose. And we had sewage coming out of our toilet. What happens when you're not home? Um, we were in Italy this spring and my daughter had to spend the night at my house checking on my basement. Well, her family was at her house checking on their basement. Um, this did not happen for 25 years. The last two years, this has happened. We've, I see all, many of my neighbors here that have lived in their homes for 25 years. And, and we did not have this happen. We spoke to people who worked for the city 25, over those past 25 years. There, there are ways to mitigate this. Yes, our infrastructure is aging. I don't want to put any blame on any person, but there, we do have an aging infrastructure. We are aging. All of us are aging, obviously. But this is, there's, there's other things to mitigate in this. And if our city can't take three and a half, three inches of water in one rainfall, then we all have to move. I think we should put a notice in the newspaper saying, please move from Virginia because we can't hand, handle three inches of rainfall. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that you listened to us. Um, yeah, it is emotional. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for coming, Teresa. Uh, good, good evening and please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Boise. I live on 9th Street South. Um, so obviously you guys know that it's not been good for the last couple of years. I have a couple of questions. Um, since this last flooding, I went back and through what, what's been posted through uh, you know, through Google and all that kind of stuff. So I read through the charter. I read through your comprehensive plan, um, and what is expected from the city and what is expected from us. But you know, and I know you have committees and you have people that tell you what to do, like the guys that come up here and tell you that that stuff's just not working anymore. Well, you can't fix that stuff with baling wire and duct tape. Now, my question is, um, when we had that flooding last year, did we get FEMA money for that? Does anybody know if we had?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, we received some FEMA money for some of the costs associated with trying to mitigate.
Okay.
Yes. And FEMA money for the residents who could apply for some relief as well.
Did we get any kind of money from anybody else? The state or anywhere else to try to fix any of this stuff?
No.
Because as you're well aware of, um, that's all dedicated funds. And it's supposed to go so that we can keep fixing these things.
Well, we, we do have a sewer fund, Mam, and all that kind of stuff. And we did apply federally for money, but we, we, the only money we got was from FEMA.
Okay, next question was, is do, do we as a city have a grant writer?
We do.
And by any chance is the grant writer working on trying to get some money for infrastructure?
Absolutely, all the time. We know how many grants we have written and our city administrators have done a lot of grant writing and we utilize that and we grant federal grants, state grants, FEMA grants, uh,
And we have to keep-
all kinds of grants.
And we have to keep on that because without this, you, there will be no city because people can't live in a place that just has no water. Also, the thing that I, I, I was kind of confused because um, we have a water treatment facility that's a pretty good one. Um, when it was put in, it exceeded all expectations. Uh, it, it was then upgraded. If the sewage gets to that place, we're gonna have, the effluent that comes out of there is, it surpasses the MPC. The um, you know, the water is good when it comes out of there. Problem is getting it there. So, and like I said, I know that we have committees and we have other committees and other committees that are supposed to be looking into this stuff. But ultimately, it's up to you guys. You guys are going to have to figure out something. And from your committees, maybe you take your committee member chairs or whatever and have another meeting and start working on this. Because while the city was so good about picking up all this stuff last year, they won't have quite as bad of a job this year picking that stuff off the road because everybody lost everything last year. Um, they lost things this year that they probably won't be able to reclaim on uh, their insurances. Because, you know, what's two days of hard work for people that are pulling their, their rugs or whatever out of a basement that they didn't have furniture left down there because it was ruined last year. So what I'm saying is that ultimately, buck stops here and you, you people will have to decide what can be done. We're bringing to you our, our problems. So Mom and Dad, please fix it because I'm really tired of cleaning out my basement. My bones just aren't gonna take another one of these. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And please come forward. And as, as we do this, that's what we have experts for, to find out what's the problem? How do we fix it? And we all here today know there's a huge problem. We know what has to be done. It's finding the funding and the ability to do it. And we are working on the grants which do that. And yes, you're absolutely right, Ms. Boise. This buck stops with us. We tried everything. We came to find the funding for do that. We have projects coming from 2026, 27, 28, 29 and beyond to help mitigate some of these things. Just a matter of trying to find the funding and getting the project moving forward. So you, uh, agree with you 100% there?
You know, and there was one more thing. When I, I read that comprehensive plan, living document, you can change what you decide to do with that kind of money. And you can change it in a- Anybody, did you have a melon on camera?
Well, we're, we're unsure what type of uh, equipment is used to accommodate that, but that's in the process of being repaired. So, thank you for that. Thank you. Uh, welcome to the council meeting. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Donna Peterson. And again, I would like to thank you, Larry, for helping us on Monday night. Not only is our infrastructure in this fine city getting old, but look around. We're getting old and you know yourself because you know how many trips you made up and down downstairs with buckets of water the other night. Some of us are not able to do that anymore. Are we supposed to just stand there and watch the water come up our basement and destroy everything we have? We spent $18,000 last year after the flood, putting the system, trench system all the way around our entire basement, having my granddaughter's room waterproofed and special flooring put in. It's all gone now. It's all gone. We have to find a problem. The young people are not going to move to Virginia, Minnesota. They're not going to stay in Virginia, Minnesota. And I hate to tell you this and I believe I told you this Monday night when I lost my temper on the phone. We're gonna start dropping dead from this. I'm fortunate. I live with my children. They're able to take care of that stuff. There's a lot of these elderly people that they don't have the help they need. There's a lot of these elderly people that they don't have the help they need. And it's up to the city to get it together and give us the help we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you. My name is Jen Fredrickson. I'm also a resident of Ninth Street South, like many of my neighbors here. I'm not a public speaker and I never do something like this, but it's extremely important. So I'm here tonight. I might be a little bit scattered, so forgive me for that. But I have been living in the Lancy Edition on Ninth Street South for, since 2008. And obviously we've all been in the same boat for the next, the last couple of years. Three times my home has flooded. I have a fully finished, fully furnished basement. It, last year had three feet of water in it. And Monday I had water. Luckily I was home, still had water. After last year, I put in a higher horsepower sump pump. I put in a check valve. It still came through the drains. So this is not something that I feel like I can control anymore. We were unfortunately in Bemidji on Friday night going through a tornado. That was really fun. And I came home to 16 inches of water in my basement on Saturday. Everything that I did last year is gone. I put in a $14,000 air conditioning unit that was ruined last year and had people out today to look at it and I'm not sure if that's going to make it. We as homeowners cannot be expected to do this year after year. No one can afford it. I have a daughter who is a freshman at Rockridge and I love the state of the art school that we have. I love the ITMEC. I love everything that we're trying to do in this city, but I can't live here if the city can't also support me as a human, as a resident. So I, I just, I plead with you. Take a, take a ride down my street. It is literally caved in on the sides. We can't live like this and something has to be done. So, thank you.
If you could just leave your address, maybe downstairs, just later on me at my door, I'll come and take, we'll take, come and take a look. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Crystal Royer and I'm a resident of Virginia for the past five years. I first want to start out with gratitude, as I always do when I come and speak at these meetings. Thank you to the public servants who spend 25 hours a week sitting here, to the city workers who keep our, our city going. I had no intention of coming. I was actually making my kiddo's dinner and watching the city council meeting and I saw everyone here. So there's a couple of things on my mind. When I live in a city where my mortgage payment in 2021 rose from $1,400 a month to us now paying $2,200, and when you look at the math, 90% of that is the city of Virginia taxes, because I've done the math. I have a couple of expectations when living in a city. One, if I call 911, I really want someone to come. And I had to call them the other week and they showed up and they were phenomenal. We have some of the greatest staff on our EMS service and I can't thank them enough. They helped my daughter. Two, when I flush my toilet, I want the stuff to go out and stay out. I don't have anything prepared, so everything I'm saying is from memory. I missed the first part of the meeting and so I'm wondering if a conversation of a strategic plan has been talked about. If you look at the city of Hibbing, they work alongside their PUC and I think they're on phase 14 of 16 to address their aging infrastructure with very strategic investments from tax dollars to update that infrastructure. Two, applying for CDBG grants every year and they're awarded consistently. You can look back on it. Where's the conversation on what the strategic plan is going forward for not only our infrastructure, which I hear that we're being very reactive to, together with, where is, for other, you know, my partner works on heavy equipment, some of the things that I see our city workers working on and driving, I'm like, oh, good Lord. Where's the strategic plan on addressing that so we're not being reactive? I hear counselors at this meeting say this was talked about seven years ago and it is still a problem today. So I guess that's one question I have. Do we have a strategic plan going forward for the, our failing infrastructure?
We have a strategic plan. It encompasses a variety of things, everything that the city has to do. We have a plan moving forward. So whenever we have an issue, and we, this has been some significant discussion about our infrastructure, not only what's underneath the ground, but what's above the ground. It's not necessarily what the surface looks like on a road or a street. It's what's underneath it and, and the infrastructure is crumbling. We have professionals that do this on a regular basis. We have, we're taking not just a reactive approach, Ms. Royer, we're taking a proactive approach. We're investigating all the sewer lines. We're televising it. We're doing the smoke testing, doing all those kinds of things and trying to make an effort in which to find a way in which to move forward. So in, in short answer to your question, yes, there, there's a part of the strategic plan is addressing the aging infrastructure that we have. The challenge that we have, as you probably already know, is the fact that it's difficult to find funding for that. And so we'd have one city that's expanding their steam service and you have one city like Virginia that's eliminating their steam service. There's a different pathway there with respect to strategic plan. But yes, it's part of our strategic plan. It's probably one of the most important parts of our strategic plan because we have a five or six-prong approach that includes housing and those things. But yes, infrastructure is an issue.
Awesome. That is great to hear. And I know the comprehensive, or the city's comprehensive plan and other taxpayer had mentioned it. It was last updated in 2017. When is that scheduled to be talked about and committees formed?
Well, that's a good question. I thought, didn't we have an adjustment to our comprehensive plan after 2017? When, when we had SCH and the committees and citizens participating in the development of that strategic plan, which is a living document, which could be adjusted at any particular time based upon the city council and the issues that we have, particularly this one here. Pardon?
That is the last update. That is online and as Britt and I have discussed, the website is clunky and hard to navigate. So maybe it's on there, but if it isn't the most updated, it would be great to see it. Finally, I'm going to address an email from 2023 that I had sent to the council. I had spoke with a city employee about my concerns with the road and that's when I first started getting invested in what happens at a local level. During that conversation, it was stated that the steam was shut off by the VPU and that caused 17 water main breaks that same winter or that last winter and that they had to pivot funding and pivot workforce to address those critical areas. And hindsight 2020 is always worth the money. But I'm wondering if there was any conversation to work alongside PUC because during that same conversation, he had said that the steam warmed the lines and that the original infrastructure wasn't buried below that frost line. And so when the steam shut off, that is when, what has caused all of this infrastructure failing.
Yeah, in, in some respects, that's the case. For example, Midway, the, the water lines are only two feet deep. In other ways, so yeah, that's, that is correct.
Okay.
So, but we do work very closely with the Department of Public Utilities, with Matt Reed and our Public Works Director and our, we work very closely with them. As you know, well aware that our city charter that this Department of Public Utilities is, is an autonomous entity and the city has no control over what they do, only in the bonding aspects of it. But yes, we work very closely with, at the time it was Mr. Hoffte who's since retired, but Greg French and the rest of the crew and the outside, Aaron from outside services. Yeah, we do work very closely with them with respect to those infrastructure needs. And, and whenever there's a project going on, the public utilities and the city engineer and the public works were side by side.
So two months ago, there was a conversation about the capital investment for the equipment. And it was, the city had stated that they may buy equipment from the PUC to save taxpayers' dollars and the VPU and the city both serve the taxpayers. Do we get that at a reduced cost or is that market rate?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's a market rate. We do, we have, we not only exchange equipment, we borrow equipment from, from each other. So we don't necessarily buy, but this was a, a piece of equipment that became available. They were getting rid of it. And I, I would probably have to defer to Mr. Rosvid to give us an answer as to what they were asking for, for that, for that PUC piece of equipment. I'm not sure what it was, but it was, it was, Jim, do you recall?
It was a 550 bucket truck, which we replaced. We had an older bucket truck that we couldn't get inspected, that would pass an inspection anymore. And we paid about 30% of what they should have sold it for. So they've been more than fair to us. We borrowed their abandoned trucks during winter time, all, all winter long where we don't pay that. I mean, they've been more than fair.
Okay. No, that's great.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Does that answer your question, Crystal?
Yeah, it does. And then the ditching that occurred by the wastewater treatments, has that been making a difference? Because that's the area that I live in and we still had eight inches of water in our basement for the third time. And we have a sump pump and we have a drain tile. And in fact, we have two commercial sump pumps that are going into the yard following Matt's advice. Has that been making a difference? Because I haven't seen it.
Well, it's, it's an ongoing issue. It's, it is, is supposed to alleviate some of the issues, improve the, the water flow to and through. And yes, it is making a difference, but it's still an ongoing effort. It's been neglected for, for many, many years. And Mr. Rosvid, who came with us three years ago alongside with our, our CSCH engineer record, has made that a priority to try to help adjust those and get those done as quickly as possible, help mitigate what you've experienced here today to help at least reduce it.
Okay. And then from that, you know, I, my neighbor had seen that wood that was being logged, delivered to a neighbor's house. Is that still happening? The wood that was logged from that area, it was being delivered by a city loader to a neighbor's house? Is that, is that a common practice? Like if there's more logging and there's residents or taxpayers interested in?
Well, I'm not aware of that accusation. All I know is that if there's, if, if there is wood that's available, we cut it up, we leave it there, we, if somebody wants it, they could come and take it. Whether, whether a city loader made that delivery to some, some residents, I am not aware of that.
Oh, sorry. And I had, I did send an email to the mayor council email about this, so I don't know what happens to my emails.
We'll, we'll get an answer for you then on that one, Crystal, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
You're welcome. Good evening, sir. Welcome to the city council chamber. Please state your name for the record.
All right, Margreen. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Davidson. Another one of those Ninth Streeters, Ninth Street South. Well, we got a bunch of them. Ninth Street. And everything's kind of been said already. But I will say what this guy said. Okay, so we have a, like a sump hole with drain tile that you could see it in there, okay? And that's supposed to be, you know, going around your house, the drain tile, right? For 20 last couple of years, that, nothing would come in that. No water would come up from that thing at all. Completely dusty, bone dry, crazy. Well, these last few years, now this stuff's coming up from there. So that's something we got to look at. All right. Jen, my other neighbor, she was saying that our street, our street is caving in. So I remember a few years back, they said, yeah, your street, Ninth Street, yeah, that thing is pretty high. We're going to shave that thing down. This is like three years ago. And so what's happening is it's, it's slanting way down, so it's, you know, going to the curb. It's gotten way worse, right? You can't, in this winter, this beginning of this winter, when we got that, you know, that snow, ice, that froze, whatever that was, and people, I would come to my house, they'd park next to my house, you know, in that slanty street, they couldn't even walk on that thing.
Mr. Davidson, what block is, what block is that? And then we'll have the staff to take a look at it.
Ninth Street, Ninth, 902.
902 Ninth Street South.
Yeah, but it's our whole street. Yeah. It's crazy. Yeah. Yep. It's heaving and something is, yeah. So something's not good there. And it's, it's getting worse because when I first moved there, I've been there about 25 years, you know, the street was a little bit, but that thing is dropping. And Jen was bringing that up and that's, there's something to it.
Is that, is that that corner hall? You live in that corner hall? Okay, I know exactly where that is.
Doc McCallan's old spot.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So then what else I noticed in the last couple is, last couple of years, is, okay, I'm one of the storm sewer guys that, you know, you get the sign and you, you keep the leaves and the grass away from your, so I got my little side out in my garden that, that's the one I patrol. So I do a few of those, right? So what I've noticed now, what's happened just in the last couple of years, is where that storm sewer is on the street, on Ninth Avenue. That curb has broke and sunk like going towards my property, right? And the big storm last year created like this pocket, like next to the curb and there's like a hole there. So that water is going there. Somebody's got to come look at that corner lot and that whole Ninth Street because I'm telling you, that's, that's not good. What else has I got to say? I guess I could repeat all that. I know you guys are working hard on all that, but something has changed in the last couple of years, at least in our neighborhood, because we wouldn't get it like that. So something's weird. Remember the dry sump hole? So you know, when it would rain, you know, six inches, I would get, you know, a little bit in the corner of the basement, you know, around the corners, right? So I did that, you know, that everything basement-y where you, you can dig the tile out on the outside of the house, you know? Or you can have it put on the inside, right? So I put it on the inside. So now I got a, you know, a sump, a regular big sump pump hole in one corner. And, you know, like I had said, that dusty old thing, now that thing's come back to life. That other hole, that thing is, that stuff is coming in there, so something's wrong. That hasn't always been like that. So something, infrastructure, I know it's old and, but something's really bad happened because that thing used to be a dust bowl. I'd look down there, I'd keep that taped and there's a big steel cover on there because I was worried that something would come out of there, you know? And, but now that thing is active, so it's, it's crazy. I just want to, sorry you got to listen to me. I think my wife, is that the camera?
I know, camera's right behind you there, Mr. Davidson.
Well, my wife would be proud that I talked today and that I changed my shirt because this shirt that I was working on today was not so good. I thank you all for what you're doing. We got to, I know you're doing the best you can, but that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Davidson, we'll make a note of that and have our staff go take a look at that street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. 902 Ninth Street South.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the city council chambers. Please state your name for the record. Thank you. Mr. Heisel?
Okay. Got it. Okay. Earl Heisel. I live at Ninth, 613 Ninth Street North. My son and I own the Northgate Plaza and in the last two years, we've had three floods over there. And I've had three in my, in my building. And this year, we had three feet of water in some of our basements over at the Northgate. And I, it just, we can't live with that. And it's not water, it's sewage. You know, and we were talking, everybody was talking about the storm sewers and that here. The storm sewers don't connect anything with the houses or buildings. They just, they just pick up out of the, out of the streets. So that really has very little effect on what's happening in the sewer system. And our storms have been at night when there's very little sewage coming through. Am I right?
I believe you. I don't know. You're, you're, you know, you're a very good contractor, so you know, you know about that stuff. And our engineer knows about that stuff.
I guess, I guess I just don't see why we're getting that kind of water in a short period of time.
I don't know.
No, we spent, we spent six days pumping out and cleaning up over at the Northgate. And by the time we got it cleaned up and pumped out, it came again. And it just, we got to do something about it.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heisel.
Hi. My name is Janine Baumann. And I am a resident of Virginia and also a business owner. And I had what everybody else has had, three rounds of sewer water in my basement. I'm kind of wondering, people have talked about like getting help and contacting and that kind of thing, and I guess I've never done that. I don't know. I'm asking, what's the best way for me and for other residents to contact who we need to contact? Let them know that we're one of the ones having problems? How do we go about? Is there any help for us? My insurance company is probably not going to cover the third incident. In fact, I don't think I'm going to claim anything on the third incident because I'm afraid of being dropped from my insurance company. But, you know, I'm just wondering about, is there a good way for us to go about contact? I've never contacted a council member. I've never, the first storm, I did call Public Works and talked to somebody and they said, we're out there. You know, and I'm not placing any blame, I'm just wondering, what's the best way for us to contact people?
Well, there's a number of things that you can do. The best way is to contact the Public Works Department.
Okay.
And I know they sometimes get overwhelmed under these emergency circumstances. And when you call, maybe they might not answer in the middle of the night when you have these storms because it's all hands on deck, everybody's out. But on a normal case or after you need some help, you just call Public Works and they'll send somebody out, somebody will call you back. I know Mr. Rosvid and his staffs are very good at calling people back and even going to your house and visiting with you and giving you, and giving you some advice on what options you might have. That's, that's a city number, 748-7515. And we can sure write that down, 748-7515. And that's, that's your best and closest and most immediate way to get, to get your message across. By calling a counselor, we're going to call our city administrator, who manages our employees, and our city administrator is going to call the Public Works Department. So you could call them directly, which, which helps expedite the process a little bit more. Now, if there's money that's available through some kind of a grant program, or like there was last year through FEMA, we certainly will use every conceivable communications tool in order to allow you and provide you the opportunity to look for some relief in some regard. I'm not sure if that's available anymore or not. We are looking at all our available options. There is a notice going out to all the residents that if you have some property that is not salvageable and you have to haul it out of your basement unfortunately, put it on the side of the curb, we'll come and pick that up. That starts this week. Fourth of July, we could be taking off, and then the following week they'll come back and do that. And you could call that same number, and they'll arrange to come in and pick up and help you with that as well. But the Public Works is the number that you should be calling.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. If I might respond?
No, please, yeah, please do.
I totally understand where you're coming from. Last year, we had three and a half feet of raw sewage in our basement and destroyed everything. And after that, I did a lot of research and a lot of homework. So I just want to share this, because the FEMA reimbursement, even people that went through Hurricane Katrina or the other hurricanes, the maximum they received was $800. So I don't know that we can maybe rely on that type of money coming forward that would assist us in any way, shape, and form going forward here. But when, I guess last year when we were dealing with this, the, it was on the Minnesota State website, and it's FEMA's National Flood Plane Insurance, which is the NFIP. And it, and we don't want to have to make another claim either. Our business got drenched as well, along with two, three, this is the third, fourth time. It's getting old, and I feel like we need to get to the heart of the problem. But just to put this out there, that the NFIP provides flood insurance to homeowners, renters, and businesses in participating communities. We are in a flood plain here in Virginia. Homeowners and renters can purchase flood insurance through private insurance agents or companies that participate in the NFIP. The NFIP offers up to $250,000 in building coverage and $100,000 in contents coverage for residential properties. You can Google that, it's NFIP. And I know, I feel like the state of, I think there's a cap of $25,000 in which we can all be insured up to, and I don't know if that's just in the state of Minnesota. But our agent said that there was a cap on that, so I don't know if, if everybody else has had that. But I don't want to have to keep claiming, making claims, and I certainly don't want to have to keep cleaning up. And my husband is old and was in the ER yesterday because of all the stress. So I feel you and I hear you. I feel like we need to figure this out. We need to, we need some kind of engineer to come in. I mean, we can say that we're doing this and we're doing this, but we don't have an answer. And this is going to continue to happen, and we need to get to the bottom of it. So I just, I really just wanted to add that insurance portion, and I didn't mean to get emotional, but this is very emotional. And I'm so sorry for all of you that have, have lost things during this time.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Thank you, Jean. Good evening, sir. Please make sure that the mic is turned onto green. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
My name is John Pierceall. My wife, Susan, and I have lived at Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street for almost 50 years. So we lived through the floods of the past, but we never encountered anything like we have in the past year. We lived through the great flood of the Hundred Year Flood back in the 90s. And then, as we all know, time flew and a hundred years went by, and we had the big derecho and the flood of 99. And quickly, a hundred years went by. But what has changed since then? We had no water in our basement for 20 years, nothing. Now, all of a sudden, we have three floods in one year. So I'm going in a different direction than anybody else has. And my first question to you is, how long has this company, People's Service, been working for our sewage plant?
People's Services have been employed with us for, this is our third five-year contract with them. I think it's going to be our third five-year contract, which we just signed last year with the People's Services.
Okay, we, everybody's talking about what we do, our infrastructure. What has changed in the last year? I think it's the management of our plant. We have a company that is worth, more interested in getting awards from the state PCA than they are in serving the citizens of Virginia. When we managed the plant for all those years, we did not have floods for many years. And now, all of a sudden, we are having these floods. So we, the people, would like to know why you hired this particular company? What kind of a contract do you have with them? What kind of performance bonuses do you have with them? What kind of bonuses are you paying them? I mean, obviously, you hired this country, this company to save money. But I do not believe they are up to the job they're doing. They do not live here like the, when we had city employees running the plant. They were citizens of our city, and they cared about our city. I don't believe this company gives a hoot about our city. All they care about is getting awards from the PCA. We would like to know what kind of contract, we would like to see all this information. Because I think this is where the problem is. They are not managing this plant correctly, and they are allowing this floodwater to build up before they do anything to modify it. And this cannot continue. You have caused untold suffering and distress among the cities of, the citizens of Virginia. And this cannot continue. You heard all these stories of people suffering, and nobody has brought up the fact of plant management. Everybody's talking about our infrastructure, this and that. What kind of management are we getting out of that plant? We did not have any of these issues until they took over the management of our plant. And I would ask that you people look into this contract with these people and hold their feet to the fire and demand that they perform for the citizens of Virginia, not for this PCA of the Minnesota. That's all I have to say. My father's picture is right there. He was the mayor. He'd be rolling in his grave right now if he saw what was going on with this city. Thank you.
If we just hold this for a moment, sir. Could we make a note to get the People's Services contract available, Pam? And we'll send a copy to Mr. and Mrs. Pierceall, and we'll post it on our website as well. Pardon? Yeah, and we'll get the information for, for them, and then we'll make sure we get it on the website so we all can take a look at it as well. I want to comment on why we hired him, how we hired him. I wasn't wrong when that happened. But we'll give you the contract as, as, as it's currently being served. Councilor Motley?
I'll make it quick. Can we add possibly reaching out to People's Services to have them come to the committee of the whole next week to talk to us about all the flooding and see if they have an explanation for it?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That will be next Tuesday at 9:30, or nine, 9:00 AM, a week from today.
Well, we'll try to, we'll try to get...
Do I need to make a motion? I would like to make a motion, make that a motion, please, to have People's Services come here a week from today, 9:00 AM, committee of the whole.
Okay, the motion is to invite People's Services there. They may or not be available. Hopefully, they will be, they're pretty responsive for the most part. So motion by Councilor Motley to invite People's Services to the next committee of the whole meeting to talk about the issues with the water sewer treatment and how it's being managed, and answer any questions from the council, any people from the general public that would be attending that meeting. Is there support? By Councilor Freelyb, further discussion. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. Sir, please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
There we go. I'm Adam Thompson, 818 Forest Street South.
818 Forest Street South.
Yeah. Your neighbor is a good buddy, oh, your neighbor is a friend of yours, or my neighbor is a friend of yours. I wasn't going to speak, so. I first had this problem in 2016. It wasn't sewage, it's like tachinite tailings that comes up. I have backflow valves, I've got gutters. I'm going to spend $10,000 getting my basement waterproofed in a month. That was planned before all this happened, of course. So I don't know what's different about my house, but my neighbor, your friend, said at one point he had what appeared to be tachinite tailings coming in his basement, and they fixed a valve or something. I don't know what the circumstances was, but obviously, everything is filling up with tailings, your pipes, the volume isn't there. I mean, it's frustrating. I, unlike many of my classmates, I stayed up here, and I've been in my house for 14 years. I was hoping to stay in, in that house for at least another 10, 12. I got an 11-year-old and a nine-year-old. It's a good neighborhood, but I'm frustrated. It's just, it's very frustrating. I put one of the backflow valves in, a new one, and the thing won't work because the line going out of my house is so full of rocks and tailings that it just stays open all the time. So every time I do laundry, I got to pull it. So...
818 Forest Street South.
Yeah. Okay. So it's frustrating. I got, I've been having trouble since 2016. I've had water coming through the windows, I've had waters coming through the floor. It's, it's just, it's been a disaster. And this time, I, I'm in the process of gutting my, my home, and I lost an antique crib that has been passed down through generations. I should have known better than to keep anything in the basement, so. And personally, I'd like to see some of the plans for the city. I don't know if those are available, but even the Roto-Rooter guy, when he came to my house last year, said he had no idea how things worked in my neighborhood, so. Something's goofy there. It's like every other house has problems, so. But like I said, I didn't, I wasn't planning on speaking, but that's all I got. You're going to, you're going to lose a resident that probably would have stayed here another 10, 15 years.
Ma'am, welcome to the city council meeting. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Gans, 713 Ninth Street South.
Sorry, what is it?
713 Ninth Street South.
713, thank you.
Yes, I, our road is also breaking at the end, like he, one of the gentlemen talked about. It's kind of just dropping at the end of the street. I also have a home I want to talk about, 529 11th Street South. I had the city come out last year because after the rainfall in June, there was a sink hole. It was about 10 feet long, four or six feet wide, and about four feet deep. Just happened. Like the rain was there one day, I went there the next day, and it was a big, huge hole at the side of my house. And it was unexplainable. I asked them to look, look into if there were water pipes underneath that broke or anything. They, they could not explain any of it. It was just a huge hole. And so I had to fill it in, about six yards of sand it took to fill that hole. And it has even sunk a little bit now, again, this year. So there was just this huge hole.
That's on the street?
Five, it was on the side of my house, 529 11th Street South. So those are, those couple of things. I also have a question, and I didn't, I haven't read your city plan, unfortunately. I just decided to come here tonight. But I was just wondering if there are any new infrastructure planning going on in 2026, 27, 28? Parks, greenhouses, road construction, schools? Anything new? Firehouses? That the money could be possibly diverted into this problem? Like, we don't need a new greenhouse or park, water slides. We don't need those things in Virginia, Minnesota. We need no sewage in our basement. Thank you. I just was wondering if there are any new projects planned right now?
There are.
There are?
2026, 2027, 2028, and probably in 2029. There's some significant street improvement projects where the steam lines are going to be removed, the water lines are going to be fixed, the storm sewer systems. And there's a big project that's going to start from the Department of Public Utilities on Sixth Avenue. It's the main delivery lane all the way through the city, going, is going to go all the way down, maybe over by the Old North Star jog. Well, Wade, it's going to be a multimillion-dollar project. So these are all street infrastructure improvement projects that have, that are planned ahead. We started with it in 2021, and so they continue to move forward. There's more than one, but that's just one of the plans moving forward. It's a three-year plan, 27 and 28 with, or 26, 27 with cleanup and 28. But there's more sewer and infrastructure, streets being planned as part of our long-range street improvement in infrastructure projects.
That sounds perfect. Is there anything on top of the ground being built, new?
We have nothing scheduled to be built new. We do, we do have a, that the city's putting up. There may be some houses, a couple houses, it might, there's a hotel, hopefully, and other things, but above ground, but the city projects themselves, there are, we don't have any above-ground projects, like you indicated before, the greenhouse, et cetera. These are all infrastructure projects. And, and once again, the engineering department that we have, our S.H. and our Public Works Director and his staff, they're doing, we've been, has been identifying these streets for a long period of time, televising them, putting on GIS systems, determining what are the worst ones. It's not necessarily the surface of the street, it's what's underneath and how bad the infrastructure is. And they're discovering that this is old, antiquated infrastructure that has been neglected for many years, and we're suffering the consequences of that right now. And so, yes, those are, those are projects that are scheduled to move forward, and we're getting bonding, we have a bond for those as well. And that's what we're trying to do right now.
Okay. So I understand the meaning of the project, but is the problem in the old steam lines? Or is the project in the sewer and water drainage out of the city? Or is the project in the sewer and water drainage out of the city? Like, do we need to go around the city and remove steam lines today and tomorrow?
Yes.
To relieve the sewage problem?
Mm-hmm. And as, and as we, as we do our new streets, we take those sewer lines out, put all new infrastructure in, water lines, stormwater, fix all those things underneath, put the right material in, compacting it properly, make sure it's secure enough so it's not going to move around, to meet the current state-of-the-art, so to speak, requirements by the construction standards.
Sure, okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Counselor Johnson, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to clarify one thing. We are in the process of working on a splash pad that that is a $500,000 grant that was received, so I want to be clear that, yes, there is some other stuff that increases the livability in the city of Virginia. And just from what I know about the steam system, that's a great question. Back when it used to be free, because steam used to be free back in the day, the condensate is the water, and that's why they're connected, because the water needed someplace to go after running through your house, and that's why these systems are connected, because they were designed to flow out and the water to flow, and they weren't designed for 100-year rains every 10 years. They weren't designed, again, and the steam system, I loved my steam system, and steam system is very efficient when it's maintained over the course of the life of the system, and that's why it's being taken out. A lot of these questions about planting it deep enough and what happens when we shut the steam off, especially on North Side, were brought up in the very initial meeting many members of the city council had with the public utilities. And I know that because I brought it up in a closed meeting. That is now public information. So, these questions were asked whenever we started this process, eight, whatever, seven years ago, and you're getting the same answers that I got then, and I pressed the PUC to please have a plan. It's just like why there's more snow in alleys, because we're not, we're not able to melt our snow into the steam system, which then rusted, creating problems and infiltration. So, it's, it's a cycle that's been going on for 50-plus years, and we're just at the point now where we no longer have the ability to ignore it. So, thank you for coming in, and thank you for your questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Welcome to city council meeting. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Becky Crane. I live on the 800 block of Fifth Street South, and I am a PACZACER. I know, I realize this is not a PACZACERS Anonymous meeting, but a lot of my neighbors are here. I didn't even know about this meeting until I was driving home today and met one of my neighbors in the alley. We, obviously, as PACZACERS, didn't know what we were moving into when my husband and I bought our house on Fifth Street. We have learned over the years, and we have been in that house since 2007, so we have been here a significant time. I have a great many family members who live in Hoyt Lakes and Aurora area, who have now since moved since they retired, but I have had a connection with the Iron Range since I was born, PACZACER or not. And I have made it my mission to make sure that I stay connected to my neighborhood, stay connected to my, my neighbors and the rest of the city. And I got to tell you, it's incredibly hard to stay in Virginia. I have been laid off three times in how many years we've been here. And Annie, God bless her, she used to babysit my children. She knows how much I've been through. It's incredibly hard to stay in Virginia, but my husband and I have decided long ago, we are staying in Virginia. Now, we have not had, just like many of the other people have mentioned, we have not had water issues in our basement in all these years until last year and this year. So, we have had one major flood with a sewer backup last year. We had two smaller ones this year. My husband and I both work full-time. He is a manager down at Super One. I currently work for Range Cooperative over on Hoover Road, so I understand the multifaceted issues that are at play here better than probably some, and probably not as good as others. There's a lot of things that we can start pointing fingers at when it comes to infrastructure. Bottom line is, things age. So, my faith is in all of you, that you will hold the different facets of this city accountable as you were elected to. So, I trust in all of you to continue that work. That being said, you cannot do your work if you don't know where the problems are. So, I am happy that you have allowed so many of us neighbors to come up and speak to you tonight. Yes, it's very emotionally charged. Like I said, my husband and I both work full-time. I am also a Deacon candidate for the Methodist Church in town, so while I was working, I was also being a half-time student and a mother of two, all while losing my jobs in the process. It is hard to be an Iron Ranger, but I feel that we can come together, but I would ask that the rhetoric for putting it back on to the citizens as not keeping up with their buildings, not keeping up, that rhetoric needs to be curved. I don't know where it got started, but quite frankly, it doesn't matter. The point is, I would like to know what is the city council looking into to try to curb some of this finger-pointing that I've been hearing a lot of, because it is not helping the situation.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. What I can tell you is that this isn't, the cause of this event isn't a result of the lack of action by a citizen, a resident, or business owner. It is a product of the aging infrastructure, the huge rain events that our infrastructure can't hold up, and the suggestion is to ask the citizens to invest a little bit more of their time and money to try to help us mitigate the damage it may cause to you. You're not causing this to occur. You're just trying to take preventive measures to make sure it mitigate as much as you can the damage that's being caused here. And so, we have a responsibility to try to find a way in which to make sure that, you know, these, these actions that you take, these preventive actions you take, will necessarily be needed to be used. And so, we're trying to get the answers. We don't know. So, our engineers in our, in our staff, we don't know what's changed. We're televising, we're ditching, we do all these kind of things, spending a lot of staff time in which to do that, because the most important thing is the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that live here, and in order to do that, we have to make sure that they have a safe place to live. And part of our infrastructure, what you're all experiencing today, doesn't, doesn't accomplish that. So, that's the challenge that we have among for us, for us to do that. So, whatever we come up with, we have to do something in which to mitigate this thing.
And thank you for that, Mayor, and I hope that that really hits home with all of my neighbors, that it's not your fault. It's not that simple. It's not that simple. There's too many things going on all at once. So, as long as we can continue to keep the faith with our counselors, with our elected officials, to continue to hold things accountable along the way, I think we can get through this, because it's going to take everybody in the, in the city of Virginia to figure this out. Now, in the meantime, there's still the personal aspects, the individuals that are being affected by this. As I said, my husband and I both work, and we have two children that are in Rock Ridge, that are in the high school. We had plenty of bailers at our disposal last year to get things going. My in-laws came up from Duluth to help us get everything out of the basement immediately the next day, because the cleaning crews, there weren't enough of them to clean this up. And luckily, we had the resources that we, at our disposal at the time, to try to get that situation taken care of. We have since redone our basement almost entirely, as far as the inside is concerned. We had 10 inches of water last year. We had about two inches this year at most on Saturday, and we also had our insurance company threaten to drop us because we didn't have a better drainage system in the basement. My house was built in the 1950s, because it's part of the Vets Edition, of course, and our sub-pump hole doesn't even fit deep enough to fit a standard sub-pump in it. So, as we're trying to figure out our financial resources to make that work, we had two different companies come in to give us bids to get the basement up and running functionally, so that we, we as an individual can do our part to prevent this. The bids are coming in anywhere from $12,000 to $14,000. That is on top of a steam, a forced, which I agree with, it needed to be done, a forced steam conversion that I am still trying to pay off. So, my next question is, what other resources, and is there a committee or a subcommittee that is looking into other ways that we can help, help our neighbors get over that hurdle just as we did with the steam conversion? Because we have the monetary funds to go on a payment plan, but we do not have the monetary funds upfront. We just don't.
Mr. Osvit?
I just wanted to say that, and I don't want to push this out there, but I want all you people, all you neighbors, everybody, look at everybody in the city when there are water problems. Look to see if your neighbor has a discharge coming out of their house. Everybody in this city should have a sub-pump that pumps out into the street and not into the sanitary. If you are, you're in violation. Lateral inspections, and I don't, people, everything in your yard is your own utilities. The city doesn't own any of that. Those are called services. We own the main lines, out in the streets, out in the alleys. But like I say, take a look at, when I go through the city and I see the water problems, I don't see a lot of houses that pump water out. Their roof drains go into the sanitary sewer. Businesses do the same. It's everywhere. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see lateral inspections out of the city.
Obviously, they didn't drive down our street. Everybody on our street has.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's you, but look through the whole city.
A lot of the city is shaking here. Where do these victims shake?
You take care of the other part.
One at a time here, please. I just want to be civil here. Let Mr. Osvit finish, and we're not making any accusations here. Just that these are some observations that our staff has had. Now, I just bought a house up on North Side, had a sub-pump in there. I had to make arrangements to change that so that it doesn't drain into the sanitary sewer that it pumps out onto the street. Now, many of you have that, but many of you don't. And so, this is just a suggestion for those who don't have that, maybe you want to consider making sure that you, your sub-pump pumps the water out onto the street and, or onto your yard, and those who do that, kudos to you for doing so. Mr. Osvit?
And that's something that would benefit everyone. I'm not saying, I know a lot of people care very much about it. You have them, but there's many that don't. There's also called lateral inspections, where you purchase a house, or you come into the city, get a little lateral inspection done from inside your house. Usually, it's anywhere from $204 when you purchase a house. It tells you what kind of shape your service is. Gives you some peace of mind to see. Am I going to have to do that? First, like I say, we're doing everything we can, practice. If we had an open checkbook, we could redo the whole city, but I've been here three and a half years, and I, I think we made an awful big step in going in the right direction.
Last three and a half years, it's gotten worse.
I don't want this to get out of hand. I know that you're emotional. I know you're upset. I get it. But all we're just trying to do here is trying to answer your questions, give some suggestions. For those of you who are complying with all those things, that's fantastic. You are still experiencing flooding. Ms. Bizey, that's exactly what we're doing.
Like I said last year, Larry, you told me you were going to fix the river last year. It's still the same thing.
Okay, okay.
I'm telling people that you're going to. That's why we're so upset. We're not upset about the water. We're upset the way you handle the water, Larry.
Will you just hang on for a minute? When she gets done, you're welcome to come up and express your viewpoint. It's not an easy fix. It's not an easy fix. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. This unfortunately is exactly the rhetoric that I am hearing out in the community, and it saddens me that we can't come together and respect each other as neighbors, because I do not see any indication that anybody is doing anything with a malicious intent. I used to work at the Lutheran Social Services Children's Shelter. I know how ugly things can get in households. It is so easy to point fingers at so-and-so is doing this, so-and-so is doing that, so-and-so isn't doing anything about it. It's too easy to point fingers. So, what I am asking, and it is tough, it is very difficult, because there are a lot of emotions with that. There are a lot. But we, we need to have some kind of a rhetoric coming from the council when this stuff erupts in the neighborhoods like this, because otherwise, we're getting arguments like this out on the street, quite literally.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? If I may, Mayor?
Just one moment, if I may. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. And so, I just want to say, you know, that we're, I know you're frustrated. I am too. I water my basement as well. Same thing. So, it's a huge challenge. Yes, last year, I said, yeah, we're trying to do something about it. Well, it's a lot, it's a lot difficult. You can't do it all at one time. We're trying to figure it out. Not trying to give you lip service here. Trying to do the best we can to move forward. We have to find a resolution. That's why you're all here today. You want an answer from us, we don't have them. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, thank you for speaking. I do want to address the cost that you just discussed and the large amounts, and for those people that might be thinking about doing the same thing are going to be incurring those similar costs, for sure. And so, what I heard you, what I think I heard you say is, when we all were mandated to do the, our steam conversions, at least there was a program in place to assist us with a no-interest loan to extend that portion of time, payment over time for that mandate. And now that we have something that we can't control, we're doing the best that we can as homeowners or business owners. And I just wanted to add, like, we're sitting here, I feel like part of this is a brainstorming session together, and I was just on the IRRB's Housing, their grant fund cycle, RIT starts July 1, and they- And they do have money in their housing, um, grants and housing grant assisted projects or programs that result in the creation of new housing units or the rehabilitation of existing housing units. And I am wondering, Brit, if this would qualify under rehabilitating of existing housing units that, um, have been obviously impacted? If the city could apply for, uh, a larger amount? That residents could then come forward with their estimations or their, their bills and could apply for a type of a no interest loan situation as the public utilities did in order to alleviate some of the things that are going to have to be done, uh, on the homeowner's behalf if they so see fit to want to improve in that way? Not saying that anyone has to. And a lot of people already have those things in place. But for the people that don't and that this would be a hardship, financial hardship, could we look into doing something and frame it in the, the wording, uh, when applying for the grant? That it would be used for existing housing upgrades or rehabilitation?
I will definitely look into that.
And I would like to make that as a motion. I would move to direct city staff to, uh, apply to the I triple R B for funds to create a program for assisting homeowners with this, uh, what would you say with their need? Homeowners in rehabilitation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Support.
A move by Councilor Paulson and supported by Councilor Bach Snyder, uh, to direct staff to, uh, apply for the I triple B for some potential grant money, for some rehabilitation, help alleviate some of the expenses associated with the experiences of our residents regarding the flood. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Evening, sir. Please state your name for the record. Welcome to the council meeting.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Tom Geiselman. I live on 915 10th Street South. All my neighbors here with me. I wasn't really going to speak much tonight, but, uh, the last comment about, uh, sump pump, uh, homes not having sump pumps, um, I think is almost cruel to, to tell us that we're a major part of this problem. We're not. Sump pump compliance in this city has gone way up over the years.
Correct.
And yet, this floods get worse. Also, that is a lagging indicator. That rain doesn't magically get into our sump pump. It takes a while. Our sewers are backing up long before our sump pumps are, are pumping out rainwater. So comments like that irritate me. I'm sure they irritate most of my fellow citizens. So I, I hope we don't hear any more of that from, from anyone.
Okay, Mr. Geiselman. Good point.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, we had talking a lot about storm water and sewer and how these systems are tied together whether intentionally or not and how they influence each other. So I was a little unclear of the bypass from the sanitary system, where that drains to. Could someone tell me that?
Jim?
Drains into the creek that discharges out of the storm sewers, the large, semi-taller storm sewers behind the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Um, and we talk about rain events.
No idea what the name of it is. It's the name of the creek here. We're all up right now about a paddle. Yeah.
Mr. Geiselman, please continue.
Uh, it's good, John. Um, we talked a lot about rain events. Okay. What is the rain event that we're worried about? You know, we've heard, you know, there's hundred year rain events, there's 75, there's 25. There's all kinds of different rain events. Um, the system had to be, have a design basis at some point to handle a certain rain event. And, and not knowing what it would be, I'm guessing it would be somewhere at least in the hundred year range. And that may have deteriorated over time with all the issues we've been talking about. But this, we had a heavy rain. What do you expect? No, we didn't have a heavy rain. We had three inches of rain. That's not a heavy rain. So what is the system design basis? What are we, what's the system supposed to handle?
Well, Jim, uh, do we know? I mean, all I know is that, uh, the system isn't handling it and we have to, we have to figure out why. That's why we're here. That's why you're experiencing this problem. I don't know, Mr. Geiselman.
And, and obviously there's a problem because we've got a running bypass and it's not common to run in bypass, you know? I don't believe it's all that common. I don't believe it's all that common to run in bypass.
Should be.
But I will say that when we run in bypass, we don't gain anything from it. We don't get an award. I don't get a new car. Nobody gets anything out of it. Um, as soon as my guys call, anybody from my team leaders, my foreman call, and that's running the bypass, I have guys out there on call 24 hours, 7 days a week. They're there before the storm even hits, before there's our predicted storm. Our guys are there. And when we elaborate, we tell them, open the gates, let's go to bypass. Is there something different that changed? We don't know. We're, obviously something's happening there and we don't have an answer either. But we're televising more lines, trying to decipher where it all is. And we know it's failing infrastructure. That's a big part of it. What else is going on?
Mr. Geiselman?
Yeah. A couple more quick questions. Until Becky spoke, nobody mentioned the word accountability. Um, and she asked you to hold people accountable. But who is accountable for, for opening these, these systems proactively? Are there records of this? Are there ways that we can find out if these things are being done? Because, you know, I don't think there's a lot of people in this room that think there's anything being done proactively. Um, it, it doesn't seem like there's any effort upfront. I may be wrong. But it doesn't appear that way because there's no reason for our basements to flood in a three inch rain. I had 120 gallons a minute pumping out of my basement and I could barely keep up. And I still had six inches of water in my basement. So it's not a lack of effort or preparedness on our part. And we all know that. But there's got to be some accountability somewhere and blaming it on the infrastructure, that, that's an easy out. And, and I think there should be some investigations into what's going on with this operation. And I know John talked about, about the operator of the plant and that'd be a good place to start. But there's got to be records, duty officer calls, things like that, that you guys could look at and determine who's doing what and when they do it.
Well, yes, Mr. Geiselman, that, all that is, all that is, needs to be done.
Yeah.
We are accountable as, as a, here. We have to make decisions to try to mitigate and alleviate the problems that you're having. It happened last year. We haven't done it. We haven't been able to do it. We don't know what's going on. We try to figure it out. We're going to continue to try to figure it out. But in the interim, you guys, you, all you here here tonight and those who haven't come here tonight are suffering the consequences of this failure of our system. And what that is, I don't know.
Well, I think it's a system failure and it's a management failure. And where that management failure is, it has to be determined. And that's up to you to find out.
Well, you know, and, uh,
This is not normal. It did not happen. I've lived here my whole life. I've had plenty of big rain events. Nothing like this has happened, uh, with this frequency and this.
And, and I, and I agree.
Rapidity. It just, it wasn't even, the rain event wasn't even over and it's already backing up in our sewer. It takes a while for that water to get there. So that tells me they're not doing something upfront.
Well, I, I, and I'm going to say this in defense of our engineering and public works director, trying everything they can.
I'm not saying they're responsible. Somebody is and you need to find out.
Agreed. Agreed. And so with Mr. Pierceall alluded to earlier, it's something we need to investigate as well.
I have.
Thank you, Mr. Geiselman.
Take my hat off. Excuse my hair. I'm Dennis Jorgensen. I live at 817 6th Street South.
Okay, go ahead.
My wife and I lived, lived there not long after we were married. Uh, so 1976, we moved in. Uh, during the first, how many decades? We had two storms of the century, quote unquote, uh, where our basement was severely flooded. Uh, had a thousand dollar deductible and, uh, got most of the damages paid for by the insurance company plus a lot of sweat and labor and cussing going on. But we got through that. Last year, um, we had eight inches, lost every appliance in the basement, went to ground fault. Uh, luckily, we don't have a finished basement like a lot of people do. Um, I feel pretty lucky compared to some of these folks because we basically have storm water infiltration coming in from the storm sewer. Our basement has no water running into it or anything. It's a poured basement. It's, nothing comes in from the outside. Our sanitary goes out of our basement, two feet up the wall, not at the basement, not at the floor. And I think most of my neighbors and Lency have the same, or vets have the same, same situation we do. So when we back, when the water comes up, it's not sewage, but it's a lot of black, call it tailings, call it whatever, but it's contaminated. And, uh, when that happened last year, I kind of gave the city a pass because I thought that 13th Street whole deal might have been compromising the water going out. And I think I'll leave it at that for now. However, this year, um, the days run on here because I've, I've just been, the last one we had was in my mind, two to three inches. We had some water come into basement after I had just got done cleaning it two or three days previous to that. The one before that, I think we had five or six inches of water, something in, something in that area. And interesting enough, I went down in the basement after a couple hours and I'm going, oh boy. Walked down and sure as, sure as heck, water's coming in my basement. And once again, some, uh, fairly choice words about the whole situation. I went upstairs, my wife came down, went and I said, oh, whatever. She looked, she is like, ah. Well, I went down, 45 minutes later, water was still coming up gradually and it was now about two and a half inches deep. Half an hour later, that water went right back down in that storm sewer. So something happened in that time. I don't think things were put in bypass or pumps were started or whatever, but that water just doesn't go down magically. When it comes into my house, it lifts a 20 pound manhole cover right out of the hole. That's, that's what it picks it up and moves it. That's how much force it has. So all of this to me is befuddling, I think is a really good word because there are so many different things going on. And in my mind, I'm going to start with what I think is the most common sense. You work from the low point, which is the wastewater plant, back up and look for the problems. And I'm sure people have thought of that, but I think there needs to be a decision point of X amount of inches of rain where those gates are going to bypass. Whether it's two inches or three inches or something, because that looks, to me, that looks like what happened that first night when the water started going down like, I mean, it went down, boof. In 15 minutes, that all went back down the drain. So something happened there late, late. Kind of, I know something, something's wrong there. That just didn't disappear by itself. Somebody did something and opened up pumps or valves or whatever. So what has changed in my neighborhood in the last several years? Well, the Iron Trail Motors Convention Center is across the avenue from me with a blacktop footprint about four or five times the size of the former miners building. May I ask, Matt? I don't know. I wish I had a blueprint of the storm sewers and everything. Where does the rainwater falling on all that blacktop at the miners, does it go to 9th Avenue, 10th Avenue, split, what?
Comes to my ear. Goes into those stormwater ponds on site.
On what?
There's those stormwater ponds.
Okay.
On site.
How come the miners flooded?
What?
Miners flooded. Had some water coming in.
The miners.
Or the, it met.
Well, I don't know.
It did. My daughter or granddaughter works there. She was there and it started flooding. So that's one thing that's changed. Lord knows, I love, like Target and the mall and all that and it makes fine, but we keep putting in all these rain, non-absorbent areas where the water runs out of them into the storm sewer. And I just amaze myself. I go through Target all the time and I look at that parking lot and I'm going, holy man, can you imagine six inches of water going down that? And that's where the low point is. It's close to it. So they're going to take, that backs up, that fills everything and everything starts going north, backing it up. So to me, working from the low point makes sense. And damn it, open those bypasses up. We have to do that because none of these people can afford that. Um, but quite confusing when, when in regard to the sanitary and the storm. And I know this is storm. Now, I'm getting, last year I got FEMA money and I actually asked them, I had a bid to put a gate valve in, a backflow, backflow valve. And I thought they were going to bite on it, but they didn't. So unfortunately, I didn't do it last year and I had it scheduled to do when I come back from vacation after July 4th. Well, it didn't help me this year. But this one is supposed to be guaranteed. It's, it not only has a flapper on it, but it has a guillotine, neoprene gate that you can push down, which totally seals it off. But then I was thinking, well, if I do this, my neighbors are going to, everybody that does that is just going to add to the problem for people that don't have it. But. Why, why he said he'll guarantee because it has a, it has the actual gate that you can close. That's neoprene thing.
Okay. Mr., Mr., uh, Mr. Jorgensen?
But anyway, um, this is not a matter of laying people off or buying less equipment. This is a matter of hundreds of millions of dollars, in my mind. Am I off?
A lot of money.
And, and working from a low point up, it's going to cost a fortune which none of us can afford. So I don't know where that money's coming from, but until we can do that, we need to bypass that plant owner.
Are you saying?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jorgensen.
Saying that there's a switch that could be flipped to bypass?
They open the gate or something like we were.
And that, and that will eliminate it?
Open a valve.
Okay.
Basically a large gate valve. And, uh, but it's still only about, it's still possible. Guys, because those were leaving. It takes that from there and gives more head pressure. And like I say, it was three, three dropped. We don't know what's going on. It's been working, we've been working on this though. Yeah, in the creek, we've been adding culvers, we've been. And we're starting from the stone and that's what these three projects are doing. Like I say, there was four, there'd be three plates that are supposed to carry all the stormwater. We can get that work even better. I think we can bring down the foot on the sanitary. But there's, there's, there's a lot. It runs all the way through three mile and four mile. This is all our area. We've been, we've been working with that, but we've been working, we've turned that way. We are waiting for it. There isn't anything in our area. Like I say, that tension is in the body. Like I say, it's taking everything it can to over everything. And that's what might be, add more pressure. Like I say, that's very positive. Bringing everything from. Avenue of by the hallway. All through there, either highway, street. Something's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for your patience.
No worries, no worries.
Your name, please?
Hello, everyone. Justin, Justin Skelko is my name.
That's Justin.
In the Lancy addition.
Yes, sir.
Greg, Greg Lancy being my neighbor. Um, I just want to come here today to talk to you about this river, this creek. It's, it's now a river. I'm probably the first Virginia resident that was mandated flood insurance, which has been forced upon me as of a month and a half ago, uh, thanks to whatever it was. Um, but so I moved in March of 2022, 23, I think this is my third year here. And we talked my very first year because this river was an issue. And I'm glad we talked about the mech because the parking lot there, you say it has basins, the basins go somewhere. Where do they go? They go into my yard. The outlet for those basins are 15 feet from my property on the other side of the creek. So what happens to my yard? Well, in two years, I've lost 18 feet of grass, 18. So when I go to do and check my little line here, I have to put hip waders on now, that's where my property is, 18 feet. Um, you sat in my yard last year, Larry, that's why I kind of chuckle when you say, oh, I'm going to go look at that because clearly you looked at it, but nah, well, you're still looking. You can come look today, it's still 35 feet, it's 15 feet from my house right now.
I was there yesterday.
Yeah, I have a lake. It is, you know, I mean, I guess the way you guys are putting property taxes, it makes sense that I'm like from property, but you know, so, I mean, there's, there's benefits to this. The ducks like it, the fish are swimming around my yard, it's, it's quite weird. I'm, I'm bound and determined to catch a fish off my deck. So that's my goal for the week. But so what I'm saying here is, is my property taxes, my insurance has gone up $540 in two years. So for people in Adam was here and Shelley, the people in my age range, why are we going to stay here? Like what is in it for any of us that have kids? You know, it used to be a great place. I grew up here, you, everyone knows I grew up in Mount Iron, I went to Virginia school, went to Mount Iron, I went a little bit of everywhere, but it's not there anymore. So we have no opportunities. The cities are, are, the town is just dying. We have water issues every day. Monday I was in New York, I had to talk to my girlfriend and her sister for three hours of pumping, here's the sub pumps, go here, go here. So then I had to call Pete and Brad in Scorich, my neighbors, hey, come over and help them because I don't want to flood again. So what happens? Oh, three days later, three inches of rain, um, oh, we're back at it. I have three sub pumps running, I have drainage all around, I know who built the house, I know the people who built the house, I know everyone who's owned that house in between and they've never had a flood. So now here we are, two years, three floods, you know, and no insurance. Luckily this year I have insurance, so hey, good. Um, but it, it's to the point like, why do we stay here? And, and, and my frustration, Larry, is last year you sat there, I have a text message stating that, yep, we are going to do this in the fall, it's all going to be dredged. And I go walk and there's no dredging. My yard is literally 18 feet shorter, my property taxes are $3,000 higher than they were when I bought the house and I'm losing land. I have a sinkhole, last year I was cutting the grass, my leg fell three feet. Now what's going to, the medical bills, I can't let my kids within 10 feet of that thing now in fear that they're going to sink. So we have a problem and, and I'm getting a little bit frustrated that, that nothing has been done. And, and this stupid arena that we built across the street that we're losing money on, which is a complete waste of money, is now dumping all their water into my yard, literally 15 feet across the creek. And I guarantee you, whoever the engineer of record is, and I don't know if it was you, and I apologize if it was, you missed something. Something was a miss and there's something wrong and it needs to be fixed. Like the drainage is awful, that river is awful, I don't care what happens with mining property, I'm caring about my time, visit my little area here, my neighborhood. Like Sam Maloney who moved in next door, their yard is getting more and more and more, it's only a matter of weeks until it is. And this is a problem. When we get one inches of rain, my water goes up eight to nine feet into my yard. When we get three inches of rain, it goes up to my doorstep and then I have to pump every single time. I can't put bonfires in my yard and I'm paying all this property taxes that you guys keep throwing at us and it, it's frustrating. So I just want something to be done and I don't want to hear we're working on it, you know? I'm a little bit nervous what I heard earlier. I heard negligence and I heard it's going to get worse. I'm like, well crap. Negligence is, let's put up a $40 million building here and a $50 million building here and lose all this money and it's 90 years old. It's not like it just turned old yesterday, we could have been fixing this for 20 years. But no, let's just wait until it becomes a catastrophe, just like everybody does in life. Like it's got to stop and something's got to be done. And, and what scares me, Larry, is, is I hear about all these plans, 26, 27, 28, but then when I'm following the city, all I'm hearing is we're broke, you have no more money, we're at a, we're at a, a level that if we drop one more notch, you can't get any funding from anywhere. So then what are we going to do? So basically I'm hearing negligence and I'm hearing it's going to get worse. So as a homeowner who lives now in a lake in Virginia, I call it Little Silver Lake, what, what can be done? You're, it's going to get worse. So my basement, is it my whole house going to flood? Like what is it going to take? What do I have to do to get anybody here to help? That's what I'm asking and that's what I'm really concerned about. And I know I'm not the only one in the city, probably the only one with flood insurance, but forced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skelko and, uh, go ahead. And Jim, with respect to what's behind Mr. Skelko's, I know there was a plan to, when it dried up there, we tried to get some dredging done in there, you're going to try to get some heavy equipment in there and pull all that stuff out there and open it up, that was the plan, is that correct?
Yes, we have been. Um, that there's work, it runs from the public cemetery. Connor Lee, we. Cover into water, water. All. Basically that happened. We can't get in there, we've got a leak for two yards. We've spent a lot of time in there, a lot of money, a lot of effort to make it active. But my concern is a lot of, a lot of that is. There is seriously a problem.
Okay, uh, thank you. Mr. Skelko, I, I understand, I empathize, it's easy for me to say that. I have the same problems in my business like all you here. It is very frustrating. We have to do something about it. And when I say we're trying to do something about it, we are. Have we been effective in doing something about it? No, got to figure it out. So once again, as the other council is, it's easy to apologize for any convince you had, it's been a tough thing for all of you. I get it. And if the buck stops with the elected body, try to figure this out. And, and until we do, you, you all here are suffering because of it. Anybody else would like to come before the council and speak, please come forward, please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, I'm Tammy Solder, I live in Williams addition. I bought my home here in 2003 and on the disclosure document, it said that there was two floods in 1999. When, uh, July 3rd of 20, or 2003, my basement flooded to the bottom step. I was in the home for a couple months. Um, my father is a master, was a master plumber, he's passed on now, but he put in battery backup and another sump pump, so I had two pumps in there instead of just the one. Um, then there was another flood in August 17th of 2017. And that's when the backup valve was not open and my father said, there's something wrong here because there shouldn't be this much water coming out of your home. I had both sump pumps with the hoses to the street and it was gushing out. The storm drains on the end of the street were flooded. Water was going everywhere up and down the street. And then in May 31st of 2022, I had two inches of water in my basement. September 24th, 2023, I had another inch of water in my basement. June 18th, 2024, I received water sewage over my knees in my basement. I lost everything. I had two pumps running, couldn't keep up with it. Sewage was coming in my basement so fast, it looked like Old Faithful was in my basement. I sat in my basement steps and I thought, good God, please help me, I need help, I was by myself. I called A1 service, seven o'clock he came out there, he didn't even have enough pumps. He said, this is the best I can do, I'm trying to help everybody else. I literally took the rain gutters off my house and made a train out to the street so that the water would not be flooding both my neighbors, my yard, and just recirculate and we'd be like nowhere. So he brought that out until seven, he came back the next morning, 10:30 in the morning, finally all the water was out of my basement from that, from A1 septic. If it wasn't for them, it probably would have went even higher in my basement. Then in June 16th of 2025, and June 21st of 2025, I received another inch and a half of water in my basement. October of last year, I said, I'm done. I put my house on the market, I can't live like this, I can't afford this, I spent over $10,000 of my own money. I had to get a brand new furnace, which I already had replaced in 23, and a brand new water heater. And I had to get a brand new washer and dryer. My basement was finished, fully finished, cedar, everything, it was beautiful when I bought it. Now, lost total market value on my home. All my neighbors, we all have sump pumps in Williams addition. We all have sump pumps. I have a check valve on mine. And I was in St. Cloud for this last flooding and thankful for two of my very best friends watching over my house said, sorry, I'm emotional, you got water coming in your basement again. I said, you have got to be kidding me. I bought two brand new sump pumps, I had the original one and then my father put in a battery backup one. I replaced those a week before, I paid $1,200 for one pump, $375 for the second pump that was bigger. And I had to come home from down in the cities and clean my basement again. I can't keep doing this, I can't. It's too much, it's emotionally draining, extremely stressful. All my neighbors, I am the youngest one and I'm 60 in my neighborhood. Two of the ones in the alley, their children came last year for June to help them move out of their homes. They just dumped the house, sell it for whatever and get out of here. They're too elderly, they can't take on all of this. I couldn't take on all of it. I was emotional wreck, I was like, when is the water going to stop coming into our basements? Not just water, Matt, sewage water, sewage up past the toilet seat in my basement. And I'm sitting there on my basement steps saying, when is this going to stop? It was just coming up and coming up and I'm like, I'm done, I'm done. What's the point of living in this city if every single time it rains or sewage backs up? What do we do? I don't want to get canceled from insurance for filing so many claims when it's not my fault. All these residents, it's not our fault. We're doing everything, sump pumps, check valves, having people check your house, every time it rains, you're freaking out thinking, what's going to happen next? How much more are we supposed to handle? We, we're, we're past our limit of handling it. So I'm here to beg you, whatever big projects, please put this one at the top because we're completely stressed out. I've lived here for 22 years, I liked the city of Virginia, but this was the last straw, that last one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to address the council, please come forward?
Mayor just asked.
Uh, yes, Mr. Jorgensen?
Hold miners memorial parking lot.
That is all concrete, I imagine that's running into the storm sewer on Ninth Avenue, Couldn't that concrete be stripped out and that old area be made like a place where water can accumulate instead of run into Ninth Avenue? I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a problem, but that, that stuff's got to be going in the Ninth Avenue. And it's a pretty big area when you put five inches of water on there in the avenue. Something to think about, very little, but.
Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Okay, uh, is anyone else that'd like to come before the council and speak? Um, I, uh, I'm sitting here having no answers for you, none. All we have to do is find a way which to mitigate this thing. How we do that, I don't know. Mr. Pierceall suggested we go from the water treatment, find that out. We have to do, we have to investigate this to the best of our ability and try to do whatever we can to mitigate it. I told Mr. Skelko that we were going to try to do something in his area, I was at his place four or five times last year and, uh, I talked to Mr. Rosvidt and he was there and the staff was going to dig that thing out and do these trenches and get all these things done. Well, that's not helping right now. We still have a lot of work to do. By putting these projects on, layby on the side, the Iron Trail Motors events are that staying in care of, the hotel developer, if you'd want a hotel, well, you know, that's something we have to talk about. Uh, is, is the concrete after you remove, do we wish to do that? Can you build a townhomes over there at the old baseball field when time comes in, in, in two more years? I don't know. If flooding is a cause of that, we'll have to find what the causation is that's causing you have problems, not only just on South Side, but on North Side where I live as well. So, uh, please come forward, Mr. Pierceall. Go ahead. Please turn the light on to green, sir.
Last Friday afternoon, I posted on my Facebook page, which I never post, I posted a warning that we were going to flood Friday night. I just came back from fishing in Canada, I got home Friday afternoon about two o'clock. At three o'clock, I could see the storm warnings and I posted on my Facebook page, city officials of Virginia, get out to the sewage plant and protect it. Get somebody out there and do your job. Look at my Facebook page, it's right there, last Friday afternoon. Susan, I talked to you, I warned you, get somebody out there, you're going to flood tonight. And I predicted it, I'm not very smart, I'm just an old guy going fishing most of the time and trying to keep my house clean. And I warned both people and that it was coming and if I knew it was going to flood, you all should have known it was going to flood, they should have known it was going to flood and had somebody out there to try to mitigate the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We had people out right away. Okay, um, so, ma'am, go ahead, please turn the light on to green.
Um, my apologies, I just had a couple follow-up questions. Um, in terms of getting funding so that we can come together as a community to get this resolved, is there anything that we can get from the mining industry?
So, uh, please come forward, Mr. Pierceall. Go ahead. Please turn the light on to green, sir.
Last Friday afternoon, I posted on my Facebook page, which I never post, I posted a warning that we were going to flood Friday night. I just came back from fishing in Canada. I got home Friday afternoon about two o'clock. At three o'clock, I could see the storm warnings and I posted on my Facebook page, city officials of Virginia, get out to the sewage plant and protect it. Get somebody out there and do your job. Look at my Facebook page, it's right there, last Friday afternoon. Susan, I talked to you, I warned you, get somebody out there, you're going to flood tonight. And I predicted it. I'm not very smart. I'm just an old guy going fishing most of the time and trying to keep my house clean. And I warned both people and that it was coming. And if I knew it was going to flood, you all should have known it was going to flood. They should have known it was going to flood and had somebody out there to try to mitigate the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We had people out right away. Okay, so ma'am, go ahead. Please turn the light on to green.
My apologies, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. In terms of getting funding so that we can come together as a community to get this resolved, is there anything that we can get from the mining industry that we are aware of?
We are, and this is the analogy, for the lack of a better analogy, we're trying to leave no stone unturned. We're looking for every conceivable avenue of funding to help move this process forward. It is going to be multi millions of dollars, but there might be some mitigating opportunities to try to alleviate this temporarily for you until we get that done.
And are there any, are there any subcommittees that are currently on this specific issue?
We have a, a street and alley committee. We have a building and grounds committee. We, we discuss it at every working session, the communal meeting every other, every other Tuesday. Obviously, this is a high priority, at the top of the agenda for our infrastructure and how we're going to try to mitigate the concerns that you all have and all the angst and the frustration, the cost and the loss. That's all part of this.
Thank you.
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. I did get ahold of Mr. Christensen with People's Service, and he will be here on July 1st at our committee of the whole meeting, along with Mike Wrench, I'm sure, who is the operator at the wastewater plant. And on the motion that Council Paulson made regarding requesting funding, can we approve that, amend that to approve the unwritten resolution? Because we will need one to apply for funding and accept.
To waive the resol, waive the resolution? I would amend.
Amend to waive the resolution. Okay, thank you. And so, Mr. Christensen, the manager of the People's Service, who's managing our water soot tree plan will be here Tuesday morning at July 1st at 9:00 AM. And we'll do some prep work to find out what's going on and get some answers from him moving forward. So thank you for that, Mr. Pierceall and everybody who came here today. So anything else before we move on to the next item of the agenda? Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to just take a five-minute break, and then we'll come right back and we'll have Mr. Rick Crum from NTS and Sean Lewis from Cross Anderson to talk about the soil mitigations at the new public safety building. So let's take five minutes. Okay, let's move on with the rest of the council agenda, please. If everybody could please have a seat, and we'll move on with the regular schedule. Once again, we're going to deviate from the, the agenda and move, who's been patiently waiting for a long period of time, Mr. Sean Lewis and Mr. Rick Crum. Sean Lewis, of course, from Cross Anderson, and Rick Crum from NTS, to talk about the soil remediation at the new public safety building. Welcome again. Thank you very much for your patience, and I'm glad that the costs associated with this, this project is going to be minimal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I guess my job, I get to go first and describe what is going on. During the construction excavation, that stormwater pond, they hit a zone of pretty high contamination. I believe there is about 1,000 yards, 700 to 1,000 yards stockpiled currently.
Yeah, currently, there's about 1,400 yards stockpiled on the job site right now.
And so one of the concerns there was, it's, it's, it's near the location where there was a former dry cleaner. So, and of course, when you dispose of dry cleaner contaminated soil, it's a whole different deal than petroleum contaminated soil. We got preliminary results just back last night. We don't have the final report, but it looks like it's just petroleum. So that's really good news.
Yeah, it is.
So one of the obvious questions I know always is, well, how come we didn't find it in the phase coop? And I'm just filling in here, so I got to ask the same question. So I pulled out the maps and the data today, and it is, you know, and I know, Mayor, you've been through this before, is they were really close, but the holes were just not quite in the right spot, right? It's just one of those matters of luck. And so that's, so that's where we are. We put in a request to the county landfill today for the disposal, hope to have that cleaned up by the end of the day, or the end of the day tomorrow. And I know that there's already been discussions of going after some of the deed funding, which hopefully we're highly leveraged for at this point, because you can go after, because we're, we're operating under a response action plan with the MPCA and a contingency construction plan, that makes us eligible to go after retroactive reimbursement.
Well, I must say, I'm not surprised by the results, judging from when the new highway was rerouted and when they found that contamination, which is not very far from where that area is right there, and it was a significant cleanup and they had to stop everything moving forward. So this wasn't associated with patrol, the petroleum thing. I think there was something more serious about that. But so, we anticipate there to be something. So the good news is this petroleum project. What's the bad news? Do we know?
Bad news? I think that's where I come in.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and councilors and staff. Always a pleasure to be here with you, even on a long night like tonight. Thank you for allowing us to jump in on the agenda. Like Rick mentioned, we received preliminary results just this morning, so we figured better get here so we can keep things moving along on the project. Would, like Rick mentioned, we have a relatively large stockpile of soil, contaminated soil on the job site already and covered with plastic appropriately stored there. We stopped work about a week and a half ago, which I updated you all at the last committee of the whole meeting. At that point, we were waiting for these results. We have approximately 700 cubic yards left to excavate in order to finish constructing the stormwater ponds. So the plan is to, upon approval tonight, hopefully, that's what we'll be looking for, is to continue or to re, resume work out there. We'll export that stockpile that's there, we'll resume the excavation, and then export that material out immediately without stopping to stockpile it. Right now, our estimates could be, and this is a higher number, we're hoping to be a little lower than this, but estimates could be up around the $400,000 mark for the cost to remediate all this contaminated soil. So that would be to handle everything we're aware of this, at this, at this time. Again, the silver lining is, a couple of silver linings is, we have approximately $700,000 of owner contingency funds combined with some money we'd set aside last year, anticipating some of this contaminated soil in this area, but only a few hundred yards. So we only saved accordingly. So we have money to cover it at this point. We'll continue forward with some owner contingency funds even after this, which is good, so that we can complete the project. Right now, that's becoming the objective with utilizing or managing the contingency funds is, we want to make sure we complete the project, we complete it strong, and then we can look at what we have left and maybe look at some of those enhancements we talked about last time. And, and then the other silver lining too, like Rick mentioned, is we'll work together with NTS and the city to get a grant application in for, as it can, no promises, of course. Nothing's guaranteed with a, with a grant, as we all know. But we do want to mention, there is that opportunity there to recuperate a significant portion of the funds, hopefully get that back at some point. We have a couple of potential hurdles that we need to work through in the meantime. We would, we are, I will be recommending approval to proceed up to that $4,000, $400,000 mark. A couple of other hurdles we talked about is, if we continue, or when we continue with excavating the stormwater ponds, if we continue to find contaminated soil beyond that, how do we handle that transition point so that rainwater is not coming in contact with contaminated soil? Is there a few mitigation things we can do if we do encounter that? And if we find anything else while we're excavating, you know, a $700,000, 700 cubic yard, pardon me, space still has a lot of mass there. There could be other things in there. There's those risks, but in order to find out what we're actually going to be dealing with, we need to proceed to get to that point, and then I can come back and report if we find anything else at all. Miss Anything?
So you're looking for a motion from the council to authorize you to proceed with the remediation or investigation of this, of the contaminated soil, and the report coming back and allowing the expenditure up to $400,000, which would come out of the owner contingency fund, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council?
I will move the expenditure up to $400,000 for remediation.
Council Johnson moves to a resolution to approve up to $400,000 for the remediation of the contaminated soil on the public safety building site. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Bachsneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilor, staff. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your time. And, and I'm not going to thank you for the bad news. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Very good news.
Yeah. Well, the good news is I got your flyer for the, all right, good. Thank you. Item five on the agenda, which is, which is the consent agenda. Well, let's go back to the public forum because there's still people in the audience. Anybody else would like to speak in the public forum before we move on to the consent agenda? Thank you. Move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the June 10th, 2025 council meeting. Item 5.2, adoption of finance resolution number 25-012, the schedule of bills. 5.3 is approve the transient merchant licenses for the following. Berry Lane doing business as Street Tacos and Eats. Item 5.3B, Randy de Magala doing business as Damo's Donuts. Item 5.3C, William Mackey doing business as Kettle Mania. Item 5.4 is approve the travel request for Stephanie Smith, the new fire inspector, investigator, to attend the Minnesota Fire Codes, July 20th through the 25th at Camp Ripley at a cost of $195. And finally, item 5.5, allow the mayor, any councillor or administrative staff to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting on July 9th, 2025, in Hibbing, Minnesota, at no cost. These are the consent agenda items for the council today, looking for council action.
Moved.
Council Johnson moves to approve the council consent agenda. Is there support?
Or.
By Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull 5.2, the schedule of bills.
You're pulling 5.2, the schedule of bills. All is in favor of the other consent agenda items. Motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Finance resolution number 25012, schedule of bills, 5.42. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address the purchase or, well, the invoice from the Masabi Humane Society in the amount of $37,200. And I had emailed city staff because I didn't understand why this amount was so large. And I was sent the, the description of what it was. And when I highlighted, it was, seemed to be coming from two residents, primarily one had 51 cats in one residence, and the Masabi Humane Society is charging the city for those, for that one resident, $30,600. Of that, I counted, I believe, so that was 51 cats, and I believe over 30 of them were kittens, that we are getting charged $600 per kitten. And I do not recall, and I know, I believe Pam sent this correspondence to our city attorney, but I do not recall the city ever agreeing to pay for spaying and neutering to the tune of $600 per cat or per pet. And I think that this charge, these charges are egregious, and I don't even know, I, it says some of the litters that, some of the cats that were taken off the property, the, were from pregnant females that delivered at the shelter. So these are baby kittens who would not even be eligible at that age for spaying or neutering. So I, I questioned this whole entire invoice that we received. And then when I Googled the property owner, it's at, what is it, 1410, 1410 9th Street South? And it is. And it is, I've just talked to our city administrator, it is a tax forfeited property that St. Louis County is responsible for. And so when we get this settled with the Humane Society over the charges, my suggestion is that we assess that, the charges, that we come to an agreement with the Humane Society, that we assess that property, that parcel code number with the fees associated with 51 cats, instead of having the Virginia residents, taxpayers fork out $37,200 for a couple of residents that were sheltering cats. So I would be not in favor, I would pull this completely off the bill run and not pay this at all until we have further discussion at the committee of the whole. But I think it's egregious that they are billing the city of Virginia $600 for a brand-new kitten that was just born, that cannot be spayed or neutered, I don't think, until quite some time after.
Thank you, and I have a follow-up question after for our attorney, but first Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Paulson, for bringing that forward. I know we've also had discussion in the past as to the mandate for the spay or neutering that is not a city mandate that I'm aware of, and I think that your point is very well taken. And I will move to withdraw that bill from payment until further research can be done, including the requested information about what our minimum requirement by state statute is.
Support.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? I do, just real quickly for legal, as we move forward with this process, could you also investigate to see if, you know, I mean, property owner is the state of Minnesota, managed by the St. Louis County, who's responsible to ensuring this integrity and the safety and the security of that residential property. So by this motion move forward, that's one way to address it. Can we, can we also just send the county a bill for that? Or do we, should we do it in this other fashion?
Well, I would have to do a little more research. I did just a little bit briefly today, and what I saw is that, one, animals are surrendered, you know, if the city does pay for the services, that they can give the owner a bill for that. So I would have to follow up if we could, you know, give it to the county since it was their property.
Okay, very, somebody living in there? Somebody living in that property? Okay, anyway, motion, support, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I would move approval of the rest of the bills.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just drafted the motion as to remove the Misabe Humane Society invoice in the amount of $37,200, $37,200 from the finance resolution, schedule of bills. Is that okay?
That was moved, supported.
To remove that.
Yes.
Right, and we voted on that? Thank you. Counsel Paul, Counsel Johnson once again. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, I was just wondering if we could have been the motion to then have that put forward to the discussion at the committee of the whole.
Yeah, I think separate motion and for to go to the committee of the whole. Motion by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Paulson. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, we done with that? Anything else? Did I miss something? We might as well invite the Humane Society there, they're going to know about it anyway. Let them come, I don't care if they come or not, frankly. I mean, we're going to take action based upon that, they sent us a bill, we're going to discuss the amendment, that, feel whatever reaction we're going to take, and, so, you can go ahead and send them a letter, or send them a notice. Okay, now, thank you. And we approve the rest of the agenda? Is that correct already? Okay, thank you. Item six, appearances, we have no one. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, discussion items, item 8.1, adopt the resolution providing the issuance, sale and delivery of $9,45,000 in general obligation, series 225A. And just for the edification, knowledge of the, of the general public, what is this for?
The bond for our street project.
Okay, thank you, bond for the street project, thank you.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Or.
Support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution for remediation of blight at 818 Thirteenth Street North.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Paulson, is there support?
Right.
By Counsel Motley, further discussion? I'm glad this is finally moving forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt the resolution to accept a donation for the purchase of trees.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Freely, is there support?
Or.
By Counsel, pointing in both directions, ABC, Counsel Motley, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.4, adopt the resolution to accept the donation for the purchase of some golf hole flags.
So move.
Moved to approve by Counsel Bachsneider, is there support?
Or.
By Counsel Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Men's Club is spending their money. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.5 is adopt the resolution to hire independent contractor umpires for the 2025 baseball season.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely, supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.6, approve the resolution, adopt the resolution approving the sale of land to Marcia and John Neffs.
Or.
Moved to approve by Counsel Beyondich and supported by?
Or.
Counsel Johnson, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.7, reluctantly accept the resignation from Isaac Brink from the Human Rights Commission.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Bachsneider, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.8, we did have a motion or a public hearing earlier on item 8.8, adopt the resolution vacating the alleyway at Block 12, North Side Addition to Virginia.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Paulson and supported by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, committee reports, item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on June 17th, 2025, turn this portion of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benis. Britt?
Thank you. At the June 17th Committee of the Whole Meeting, Dave Fink from St. Louis County Environmental Services gave an update on the St. Louis County Regional Landfill in Virginia. He discussed the information regarding the area landfills in the St. Louis County management system and specifically regarding the MPC requirements for permitting of Virginia and the Canyon Facility. After discussion, the council discussed the tipping fees and the issue of legal dumping in Virginia, there's, we're of course still working on that. Fink noted that this is also a concern across the county, not just with us, and the county has hired a deputy blight person to look at their issues, which is great. Mr. Apurva Patel from Virginia Hospitality LLC was present to discuss an update on the proposed hotel to be located next to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. He did mention that he's hoping construction will begin this summer, early fall, and that he has increased the hotel room count to 119 and will also include a pool. The agreement, the development agreement we have, did obtain, did obtain updated signatures, and we are hoping that construction begins rather soon. Mr. Matt Reader, a city engineer of record, was present to discuss the two supplemental letters, letters that he had submitted for the final assessment hearings for the two street projects that we had last year that are finishing this year. The Sixth Avenue South and Seventeenth Street South Project and the Tenth Street South and Thirteenth, I'm sorry, Tenth Avenue South and Thirteenth Street South Project. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to enter into an agreement, supplemental letter agreement with SCH for the Sixth Avenue West and Seventeenth Street South Final Assessment Hearing Process.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Or.
Counsel Freely, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the supplemental agreement with SCH for Tenth Avenue West and Thirteenth Street South Final Assessment Hearing.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Or.
By Counsel Motley, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was movement supported to approve the resolution to receive the feasibility report and call for a public hearing for the 2026-28 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely, is there support?
Or.
By Counsel Motley, further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to all the discussion and the flooding and all the discussion that we've had this evening, is it prudent, like, some of the suggestions were, put certain things, like, not in abeyance, but maybe pulled off or divert the funds? Is this, would this be something that we should look at in place of or not? I'm just, I'm trying to understand, we're going to be ending, this is going to be a bonding project. We really need to understand where our priorities lie, and I, and I know, I know, Matt, you're, this is frustrating for everybody, I'm sure, because we, you know, you guys have been making, I haven't been a part of street and alley at all, and what you guys talk about or how you put plans forward, but in light of everybody that was here tonight and all the problems, should we be having a public hearing for, for the projects that are on that list? Or should we really be discussing how we can fix the problem that is at hand?
Matt?
This, this project is actually one of those that are on the list, and this one is one that, if you recall, has to do with the steam and the coal plant being shut down over at Public Utilities. So it's something that we're going to need to do. It is one on our, on our list too. It is actually one of the top two, if I remember, I'd have to look at the list.
I know, I don't have.
It was one of the top two on our priority list as well. So I think, to answer your question, yep, we should be looking at that, but, but yes, this is one of the priorities.
Could we add on to that discussion, Matt? Or could we change the scope of what you've, I don't know how much, how far down you guys are in the process of adding some of that, because that's not far off from where some of the problem areas are on Ninth. Could we add any, anything to that in terms of if we need additional funding?
Are you talking about Ninth Street South, where the residents were from?
Mm-hmm.
That's actually on the list too, believe it or not. That one is on, it was a little farther out because it was more surface stuff than it was utility stuff, and I think that's what we heard today when they were concerned about the road and the road shifting, and it's, it's pretty ugly, those streets are, are in pretty bad shape. But we are up by the power plant, Ninth Street South is a little ways away, but we can, if we want to.
I'm just wondering if we should just adjust, after what we just heard, if we need to adjust our direction? That's all I'm asking.
Adjust it from Sixth Avenue? No, I would say no.
But there's a whole list on that, for the, that's, 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 what, two years? Is 2026 through 2028, it was more than just that one? I don't have the list.
It was Sixth and Third, Sixth Avenue.
It was just that one project, Matt?
Yep, it was just the one project. There's other ones that we had on the list, but when we started looking at what this project was going to cost, we kind of said, whoa. So to try to do this project, we're looking at potentially eight to 10 million dollars just for Sixth and Third. If we want to add more to it, we can certainly do that. I think the concern was just, we were already creeping up to that 10 million dollar stage.
And this is not one of those that could be put off and fix, fix this problem first?
Mm-hmm. Because of the, because of the potential for freezing sanitary water main underneath the coal plant when it is shut down next fall. And that storm, I maybe should add to that, that storm sewer that goes under there is part of this big trunk line that we're talking about cleaning. So it is, it's not the downstream end of it, it's more towards the upstream end of it, but it still needs to be cleaned and repaired, and so we are sort of jumping into that and addressing that.
If we need to, I don't mean to interrupt, I just, I'm really trying to listen to what people were saying and try to help come up with solutions. Could we dovetail off of that then and see what could be done? Like Jim Ross, that I think said, if we need to add more lines, we should be adding more lines. Like, can we, can we have that discussion before solidifying, we're doing a public hearing, this is the, this is the map and this is what we're doing?
This public hearing is for, is for the Sixth Avenue project, it's not to discuss the next phase of the project.
Okay.
Maybe there's some confusion there.
So you cannot add on to that at all, it's already down the.
We could amend the feasibility report, if you'd like us to, and we could add more pieces to this phase of the project.
Would you recommend doing that at this time, if we are going to be doing this work?
Can the city afford, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, I'm just asking the question, do we want to look at bigger than a $10 million project?
Well, I think one of the questions was how many millions of dollars are being lost on property ownership if we don't fix the problems?
If you guys would like us to look at more, we certainly can.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to come up with solutions. If we are doing this, we might as well do it right.
And it's, it's just, it's one section of town that's affected, and all the others are also affected. So you're fixing one, one area there, or trying to fix one area.
Sixth and what?
It's Sixth Avenue from, oh, let's see, Third Street South, right by the school, north to the bridge.
So I know people that got flooded on Third Street.
And we are going to, we are going, well, Third Street we just did, Third Street to the west. Third Street, um, north, we're going to take it a block over and fix some of the problems that they've had, and they're not specifically flooding problems, but there's sanitary sewer problems.
So you're one of the experts that our constituents asked, directed us to ask you, the experts, what can we do? So I'm here to ask you, when this is going forward, a large project, in your expert opinion, what should we be doing?
Making sure that we reconstruct this project to alleviate any concerns we may have.
And does that include expanding the scope of what we already have going on?
That would be the next phase.
We'd have, we'd have to have.
Next phase.
We could amend the feasibility report.
Okay, amend that.
Um, there's a lot of work that we could expand the scope to, we have a, we have a five-year capital improvement plan that lays out a number of priority roads, certainly fluid, could be changed if we needed to. We can add as many of those roads, do an amendment to the feasibility report, we could add all of them to the tune of about 25 to 30 million dollars, if that's what the city would like to try and tackle all at once.
And this isn't in my wheelhouse, I am not on this committee, I don't sit on this committee. I just listen to the recommendations from the committee. So that's why I am coming forward, after listening to people, I want to know the suggestions from the experts or the committee, or what the, what our residents are asking us is to please figure this out and fix the problem. So I'm here asking that question to you, who are sitting on that committee and who are the experts.
And if I may tack on to that, if we were to do that and add these other things, would that help alleviate the issues that they're having now?
Some of them would, certainly.
Okay, there you go. Okay. So, but we'd be bonding for wherever our bonding capacity could be as well, right? We're going to be up there.
Yeah.
So. Here. Counsel Freely, I'm sorry, Counsel Johnson. Who was, who was it, Counsel Freely?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, like, the.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, like, the prioritization of the projects that we're currently engaged in have been the better part of a decade to get to the point of the 26-28 Street Infrastructure Improvement Project, where we're at. And so, you know, we're in the, we're, we've already prioritized all of those things that we're currently engaged in all over town, and that phase, I feel, needs to continue through that to move on to the next phase then, which will then reprioritize a lot of what we heard tonight, some of which we are already engaged in already. So I think this is the right move, is to stay within the phase that we have and the priorities that we set over the course of, it's at least been eight years, I know for sure, you know, going on a decade of what we prioritize through town, and this is the next step in that phase up through 28. And yeah, there's kind of an infinite amount of work that needs to be done, obviously, but I don't think we need to pack it all together into the next phase that we're moving towards. That's already been prioritized, determined, and that's the money we're seeking that I hope we can afford at that point anyhow. I mean, it's just a lot of money anyhow, and it's a lot of issues that we're dealing with, that we heard about tonight, and I would just stick with the plan that we have in place rather than expand it because of what we heard tonight. I think that would be potentially an overreaction, with no disrespect to what we heard tonight, that'll be coming to the next step in the process, in my opinion.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would agree with that, based on the people I spoke to, there's been other issues on other streets, and those folks just didn't come tonight. I, I think that what we are doing, the, the, when Matt and Jim started the meeting and explained to us what our plans are with the smoke testing, and that's the stuff they were asking for, and, and I think that is what we need to do to make sure we're, we're methodical and we're being logical about moving forward, because I'm guessing in three to five to seven years, all those people are gonna come back here and be upset because they've been assessed for street and alley, um, um, projects. And I'm guessing it's gonna be a little more palatable to do a nine million dollar assessment than a 30 million dollar assessment all at once. So I think we should continue to move on. I also agree that we need to continue to look at it, and as we do these studies, maybe we'll find out where the big problems are and why things are happening the way they are, but there, there's a lot of armchair quarterbacks that have ideas about what's going on, on everything, and I think that our staff are professional, they are being very diligent, and again, the rain events in the last three years is nothing anybody could have predicted, like, there's a whole, totally out of our control, you know, three inches over of six hours is a lot different than three over, three inches over a half hour, and those are the kind of variables that I try to look at when I look at what's going on and what's the immediate issue, and I think sticking to the main, the 70, 48-inch, whatever, the big, the big parts is gonna allow us to better service the smaller parts, and we'll be ready for planning ahead so that we can see how we alleviate this, this stress and this, the, these challenges as we move forward. So I'm in favor of continuing with as presented.
It has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution to receive the feasibility report and call for a public hearing for the 26-28 Street Infrastructure Improvement Project, further discussion, Counselor Biondich.
Thank you, and I appreciate, number one, all the people coming forward tonight. I think it's important that as we sit here, we really listen to what they're telling us, and I, I do agree that moving forward with the plan, because we may have other answers, if People's Services is able to come and speak with us, and just brainstorming different ideas on how we can make things work better. So I'm okay with it, I'll be anxious at each meeting to see what we can help find out why this issue is happening in town, into certain parts of town. I had water, but I didn't, I've never had, knock on wood, I've never had the sewage, so I can understand the great frustration, but I think if we can work as a group and come up with ideas, we can get this problem handled, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. Well, Counselor Biondich, it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, Britt?
Next item on the agenda is regarding this splash pad, Mr. Reed discussed the service agreement. It was noted that Mayor Coffey doesn't like the location of the project, but he'd rather have an Alcott Park. Mr. Reed stated there's a $500,000 grant from M P C A. Discussion continued on the location and where the water would go when discharged from the splash pad. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the professional services agreement with S E H for the splash pad infrastructure.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, further discussion, Counselor Motley?
So are we gonna be held to any type of funding if we don't have all the funding secured by grants? Okay, all right, thank you.
I still don't like the location, but it's a grant, and it's for, you know, it's amenity. Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you. My understanding is that we don't have all the grants funding secured at this point for this project, and that by approving this professional services agreement, the work would begin on the project, and that gives me a lot of concern, so if that isn't a right understanding, I would, okay, thank you.
I can't apply for any further grants until I have the plans showing what I'm applying for, so this is the step I need, is for Matt to create me the plans so I can apply for the grants showing what we're, I need money for.
And what would our backup plan be if we don't get grant funding for this project?
We don't do the project.
We don't do the project.
So the work will not begin until the grant funding is secure?
100%, yes.
Thank you.
This is literally just making the plans, and this is, again, it goes to what they were talking about in the audience today, this is Matt's cruise going out there on Ninth Avenue, looking where the water lines are, looking at the condition of the water lines, where the condition of the sanitary sewer, what is the condition of the san, it's all part of that process, that we don't have a lot of good information on, because that road was done in, gosh, 1999, 2000, or whatever, so we need some more information about that, so I need Matt to give me those plans, to tell me that, yes, we can connect to this because we know the main is good, we know whatever. Thank you, Matt, for dumping in rescuing, too.
Now, Matt?
Based on a comment that I heard during the public hearing, I just thought it was important to point out, this grant that we applied for, that the city applied for, for the splash pad, that's the type, we couldn't just take that money and apply it to street projects. The, it's, it's the type of grant, so there's certain funding sources that fund certain types of projects, and so I know that, that can be sometimes, for, for people that don't do this all the time, they may not understand, but I thought it was important to at least point that out, that the grant that we've gotten for the splash pad is for that type of a project, we can't just shift it over and use it for street projects instead, so, I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, and just, just to clarify, if we do not have the funding to build this, it does not move forward?
Correct.
Thank you.
This agreement is just to create the plans that I need to start getting the grant funding from I R R B, C D B G, or any of those other plans, I have to show them what I'm, that we are putting in, what if it's an eight-inch line, or whatever it may be, what I'm putting in there to get this to go.
Uh, Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, and based on the discussion tonight, the discharge of this water will not harm or add to any of the water flow that we're having issues with. Sorry, Matt.
No, that's all right, don't get my steps.
Matt?
We will have to permit everything through the M P C A and through the D N R, so there will be some, um, there'll be rules and regulations we have to follow, and there will be some outside approvals needed before we can do it, so they won't let us do it if we can't prove that the water won't harm the lake.
And it discharges into Silver Lake, right?
That's the plan currently.
That's why, edit the permit, yeah.
And that.
That's why I don't like the location, so, anyway, I digress, I'm sorry, please continue.
And the water would flow through that creek that Mr. Skelko was referring to?
No, no.
Where would it go?
It'll actually, if it goes as planned today and everything gets permitted, it'll come off the splash pad, there'll be another, probably rock, or some sort of a swale that gets constructed to the lake, and it'll just flow right down into the lake. From, right in the park.
It'll essentially act like a, like a turnover, of, of water just constantly flowing in the lake, keeping the lakes from going stagnant, from growing moss, from growing things, because it'll constantly have water flowing into it, especially since the utility won't be putting any water into it anymore, so we'll be the one now cleaning the lake by putting this water, and that's gonna regurgitate constantly.
That does work.
Yes.
It worked in Plover.
Yes, you're the one that gave us the idea.
Thank you.
Yes, yep. And they, these, oh, they are so skilled now in these splash pads, the output of water is very small, actually, it's not as big as you think, I mean, it's really, really very low gallons per minute, interestingly enough.
Okay, oh, thank you, it has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the professional services agreement with S E H for the splash pad infrastructure, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Reed gave an update on the request that we had to have him look at the retaining wall at 507 Second Street North. It was moved and supported to include the 507 Second Street North retaining wall repair project to the Sixth Avenue project, which is the 26-28 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Bachsneider and supported by Counselor Johnson, Counselor Motley supported that, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Sean Lewis was present to discuss the soil remediation at the Public Safety Center, and he was here again today to talk about what they have found in the contaminated soil. Very good to hear it's just petroleum so far, we're really happy about that. After further discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the purchase of mobile radios and miscellaneous items from Motorola Solutions at a cost of $30,223.20.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Report.
Support by Counselor Biondich, this comes from the Sprint Medical?
Correct, Sprint Medic program.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to purchase 16 oxygen cylinders from O S C at a cost of $1,904.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley, is there support? By Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the purchase for the G2 fire station alerting system with U.S. Digital Designs at a cost of $131,984.
So moved.
Uh, moved to approve by Counselor Biondich, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
There was a, the Personnel Committee meeting recap was present, was discussed at the June, from June 10th, 2025, it was moved and supported to appoint Tony Bertucci to the Cable Commission for the remainder of the three-year term ending December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Uh, moved to approve by Counselor Motley, is there support? By Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I, we did agree to appoint a resident to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of the three-year term, but I do believe Pam, he has withdrawn, thank you. We have no appointment to the Human Rights Commission, we're still looking for applications if anybody's interested. Discussion was held regarding the updated library clerk job description, there was a motion, but the motion failed for lack of support.
Mayor, I'd like to move the appoint, the approval of the library clerk job description and authorize posting that position tonight.
Uh, Counselor Johnson moves to approve the job description for the library position, is there two of them or one? One, and then, and post the job, and post the, for hire, is there support?
All support.
What by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Uh, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, I was not present at this meeting to support this, I think that it's important to understand just how important the library is to our community, to people of all income levels, all ages, people from as far away as Cook, or our library is very important, and my concern by not approving what the committee has sent forward is that we will even cut more hours and more positions or more programming, including the stuff that is vital to our, our youngest citizens, who by participating in the library are keeping their scum, their skills up at school, and I think it's important that people also understand that it is, that the library, it is the heart of our community, forward-facing, it's one of those services that people go to in happy times, they don't need to wait for a 911 call, they don't need them on their bad days, they go to the library, so it's, when it's a good day, so I will continue to support the library, and I will also be moving the next, after this vote.
Okay, so, any further discussion? I do, real quick, is that, you know, I don't, uh, no. Not right now, we'll, we'll go through this real quick, so, um, this is a budgeted item, correct? And so, uh, there's, there's money in the 2025 budget for this position, is that correct? I just wanted to make it aware, and it's not any, anything that, you know, it's with every single other department, as we look through this budget process for 2026, there may be some adjustments we may have to make, I don't know if that's gonna be the case, but that's gonna be part of our discussion moving forward, so, uh, if, uh, if it gets to the point in our budget process where we have to consider some reduction in staff, then we'll be considering that, but it is budgeted for the, and rest of this calendar year, and so that's my comment, further discussion, Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you. My, my concern with approving it is exactly what you said, is we're having conversations about the 2026 budget, I think it's unfair and unkind to potentially offer somebody a position that we think we may have to eliminate in the coming months, and that's not something that any of us want to do, we don't wanna offer somebody employment and then potentially have to withdraw that within a few months, and so with that, I'm going to move to table the approval of this position until the budget is set for 2026.
Report.
Uh, Counselor, uh, Counselor Bachsneider moves to table, supported by Counselor Motley, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Biondich?
No.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Freely?
No.
Coffey?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
What's the total, what's the tally?
Four-three.
Four-three, pass? Not to four, four-three, not to table?
Thank you.
So we, we have to vote on the motion?
Motion on the floor, to post, uh, uh, prove the job description, to post for the position, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Um, our roll call, please.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Coffey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Biondich?
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, thank you.
I will move to approve the posting for the temporary allied aid.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley first.
Is this an added position to the library?
No, you had an intern last year, that would've been in the spot, don't have an intern this year.
And then I had another question in regards to an employee that left. Can that employee still come back? Or not liable to anything anymore?
The last employee that we've had separate has separated. Everything is separated.
Thank you.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to go back to the last one, that it was moved and supported to approve and authorize posting, but we aren't hiring, or does that include the hiring? Because that would include, that would be spending money.
Uh, we're just posting for the position?
Just posting, and then we could still have discussion on it. And the only reason that I even hesitated is mainly because of what Counselor Bachsneider said. As we go through our 2026 budget exercise, I'm just really concerned about what that might look like. And I, I do support the library, and we did talk about this at the Personnel Committee. And then based upon conversations that have been taking place, and then with our budget discussion coming forward, that's the only reason that I, I'm not really completely comfortable with that. But if this is just posting it, and I know we already voted it through, I just wanted clarification that then, so you're going to, we're going to post and go through all the process, but it would still need to be, just, I just want to know, five to, would it need to be a five-to-two vote to actually hire for that position? Because it's spending money? So we go through all that process prior? Okay, thank you.
We do, thank you. So we moved to support it for the library aid, is there any further discussion? Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you. My concern with approving this position, the temporary one, was at the Personnel Meeting, Jody had said that if we have to go through the process of posting, that that's a time barrier. There was a potential applicant that they were hoping to offer it to. So I just want to confirm that, like, the timeline is even meeting the needs of the department, because it didn't sound like at Personnel that it would be meeting any sort of needs.
So the motion is for, to hire the library aid or post for it? Because you, the both? To post for it, only to post for it, correct? So if you're posting and there's, and the library director says there's a timeframe, time limit on the posting, we have to follow the posting rules anyway, correct? Then we talk about, just like we did with the, the previous one, correct? Okay, thank you. Counselor Bachsneider?
And I think that's my concern, is that it's not meeting the timeline. They were hoping to get somebody in sooner.
And we can't do that, no. Okay, so it has been moved and supported, further discussion? Library Director Jody Grimenovsky, Jody?
Yeah, we did talk about afterwards, and then we're like, well, wait, because I, the concern was putting, going through all the processes, and like, well, if we go through the process, can we not have an end date on it for, like, the summer hires? They can go up to 67 shifts?
Seven shifts if they're not in school. If they're in school, they can go up to 100 shifts.
Yeah, so this, you know, so not in school, 67 shifts, to help cover, because it does take so long to post. Like, we're finally getting our maintenance person, like, in two weeks. We haven't had one since January. So we know that it takes a long time. We have our program except for the summer, and we also have people that would, you know, like, just take vacation, or, and this week, we had somebody leave unexpectedly. So it's more to make sure that we can continue offering our services. So when I talked to Britt about it, she's like, we could, we'll do the posting, but we could, instead of doing September 1st, because that's what we talked about, because school would be back in session, it would be a little bit easier, that we don't exceed the 67 shifts or until the library, the full-time library clerk is hired. So, and I thought that got sent to all of you, yeah, should be in your packet. And that's what we, because you guys brought up some really good questions during the Personnel Committee, so that's what we talked about. To kind of meet the needs of the library and to make it worth the effort to go through the hiring process. Trying to find that balance. Does that help? Okay.
Hey, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Cuffy?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Motion passes four-three, thank you. And, you know, usually we don't do this, but we've already made the motion, and you've been sitting here this whole time, we had some discussion. Would you like to say something? You're welcome to come forward and do so. I think it would be honorable for allowing you to speak. You have some, okay, thank you. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the meeting.
My name is Jan Peplin-Jack. I'm a member of the Virginia Library Commission. I'm also the treasurer for the Friends of the Library, and I'm also an appointed board member on the governing body for the Arrowhead Library System, which provides funding for the, all of the major counties within the north, northeast Minnesota. I obviously have a vested interest in seeing that the library is as successful as it can be. I intended to come and talk about how the new information around the libraries and their role in communities is more like your family living room. Libraries serve all the groups, from young toddlers to elderly, including elderly like myself. And it's the one really stable, free opportunity for all groups in your community. And I think you lose that if you start thinking about cutting and funding. I know there are a lot of other underlying issues. I'm more interested in the support of a library that is positive and provides activities for all ages, and I think we have that in the library we have now. I appreciate your time, Larry, and I, the time earlier as well to speak to you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda was the approval of the updated job description for the city administrator.
So moved.
A move to approve the job description for the city administrator by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support?
Or?
By Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
No further items from that meeting?
No further items, thank you. Item 10, Commissioner liaison reports, is any commissioner, like, Counselor, like to give a Commissioner liaison report this evening? How about department head reports? Item 11, any department head needs to give a report today? Our library director, Jody Grimenovsky, Jody, welcome.
Okay, so, because I also get to talk about what's cool happening at the library. So this week, we did have a magician. He came on Monday. We filled to capacity under what the fire marshal allows us to have in our room, which is 90, so awesome, and all of the magic books were checked out. So they had a good time. Tomorrow, if you need something to do, you can, we're making kites. This, with support of the Friends of the Library, the Minnesota author is going to be in the area, and it's Ryan, Jay Ryan Stradell is coming, and he wrote, oh my gosh, I just spaced it because I just had it here on my phone. But he's written three Minnesota books, come at 1:00 on Thursday. The most recent one was Lakeside Sever Club, and that one just came out in the last year. So he is going to be in the area. And then we do have an indoor story play, time on, indoor active play on Friday. We did have to cancel our teen takeover. This was one of the, we had unexpected, staff had to be out, so we have moved that to August 8th. But then also next week, you can come and make your own cardboard car, so you can watch a movie on Tuesday, July 1st. Yes, next week is July 1st. And then on the 3rd, you can come make kindness rocks. That's what I have. So all of this is on our website. If you have any questions, you can give us a call at 218-748-7525. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Jody. Any other department head reports? Jenny, have anything you'd like to disseminate this evening? Anything from you? Anything from legal? How about you?
I do. We are taking resumes and applications for Finance Director and Human Resources Coordinator. The information's on our website at virginiamn.us. Please take a look and send your application or resume in.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, Britt, very much. Counselor Beyondich?
I just have a question for the library staff. Jody?
Jody, we have a question for you.
I just have a question. So did your people do painted rocks and leave them around town?
Not yet.
Okay. I took my grandson for a walk around Silver Lake, and he gave me the most beautiful painted rock with a snowman on it. So I just was curious.
No, somebody's been leaving those for a long time, so I'm glad that they found them. So I see them quite regularly. So no, ours will be in the first week in July, so we'll do some at the library and then some at the farmer's market.
Okay.
You can come and see the library book bike that made its appearance during the parade last week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor reports, item 12, any Counselor like to give a report this evening? First Counselor Johnson, then over to Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, um, I've been, I've been asked by the Human Rights Commission to again ask that we are in need of commissioners. We are with the resignation and the withdrawal, need some folks. There's a lot of cool stuff coming up. And I also want to acknowledge that June is International Pride Month, a month that celebrates love and acceptance of all people, no matter what they do, who they are, or who they love. And I just want to say that I appreciate the comments from the individual moving us forward and how do we accomplish what we need to accomplish. And I think that really personifies what the Human Rights Commission is trying to do as they move forward in acceptance and celebrating diversity in our community and surrounding communities. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the one thing I wanted to address, I will be speaking to Britt about it after, but again, there are golf balls that are being hit on properties, and I did reach out to the claims adjuster for the League of Minnesota Cities, which I have not had a chance to talk to you about yet. But I would like to see us develop a plan, an overall plan going forward of safety regarding that area. And I just, I guess the reason I am addressing this is because I have a question. When residents come to a counselor or someone, would you recommend them to turn in their insurance claim to, how do they, who would they get in touch with? Would it be you, Britt?
Either me or Pam, or Ashley is the one that probably submits them.
And when I talked to the adjuster, he said that they, the claims have been denied because there's the golfer themselves that hit the ball. But I'm truly concerned that they're the ones that are liable. So I, I need to reach back out to one of the residents that came forward to me last week. But it shattered an over $1,100 picture window, and I feel that there was another neighbor as well. And so we are going to continue to have a problem with this area, and before someone gets really hurt, I would truly like us to develop a plan. So if we could maybe prepare something going forward. Mm-hmm. And then the, I was not at the Committee of the Hole meeting because my basement was flooded. And I did want to bring up that the Rock Ridge School has parcels available, and I believe, thank you so much, Jenny, for the email that you had sent me, it was very clarifying. But I did, after talking with a school board member, it would be recommended that if the City of Virginia is interested in any of those parcels, that we maybe come together as a body and have a discussion about what we'd like to see going on, and if we were, if we would like to make any offers, that the school is not holding any property at this point for the City of Virginia. So if we would like any of those parcels, or have any interest in any of the school parcels, that it would behoove the city to have a meeting about it and discuss what parcels are available, and if we would like to purchase them, to start a discussion with Rock Ridge. So that's my report, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, I just have two quick things, if I may. I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Freely, do you have something?
Yeah, just real quick, my wife and I were driving down the alley to take a look at the fire that occurred on Third Street in the alley, and we came upon a resident who has property next door, Jeff Lackner. And I just want to make a commendation in regard to him for calling 911 promptly. And then he also said he was amazed by the professionalism and the response time of the Virginia Fire and Police, as well as surrounding communities, that knocked that fire down and saved these structures that were next to it. So thank you very much, Jeff, for your heroism.
Yeah, yeah, kudos. It could have gone way out of hand, they're so, so close together. That property has been reported on a number of occasions for blight, and, and, and the thing is this, it's just, it's a, it was a fire trap, and obviously that's what happened. So I have a couple of things. First is, um, you know, we have an ordinance, I think, against, uh, we've been getting some calls about vehicles driving up on the curb, over the sidewalk, through the boulevard, and parking in your yard. And parking in the yard between the 25-foot lot, which encroaches on the neighbor's property too. And so I think, you know, we need to send some kind of a notice out to these people when they violate it. And so I'm just going to give you the address, because it was quite a spirited discussion, so to speak. So I'm going to ask Britt if you could check with the police department, see if they could, there's a white pickup truck that drives over the curb, parks here every night between the two homes at 528 Fifth Street South. And, uh, just follow up with that if you could, please, for me, thank you. And then, again, I'll remind you, all of those who had damage to their homes and the water damage, you know, we empathize with you. We're just sick about it ourselves, and many of us here also have, has had experience with the water damage. We were trying, we've got to do everything we can to try to mitigate this, we've got to figure it out, and we're trying to do that. I know there's been some frustration on the part of many of you, so please hang in there. We, we, we do need to do something, we recognize something has to be done, and so we're going to be moving forward with that. But, you know, you, the suggestions that you all take, is there suggestions that helped mitigate it? We're not saying that it's your fault, we're saying they help prevent any damages, or to mitigate some of the damages, these are some of the suggestions you can use to help you do that. That was the only reason that was disseminated to you. And we do have very professional staff on board. We do have a great, uh, Public Works, Britt, we had a phenomenal engineering company that has been, served us very well. And if we have to go and find out the core of the problem from the water sewer treatment plant back, that's what we're going to try to do. So thank you very for coming, thank you for being so civil, and I know it was very emotional for you all, so we apologize for all that angst it's been causing you, and thanks for coming in and expressing your views. And then there's a cleanup opportunity for you. Dial 748-7515, that's 218-748-7515. If you have some things that you can salvage and need picked up, put it behind the curb, you call that number, they'll arrange for the pickup for you at no charge. So, thank you, everybody. It's been a long day. Thank you, the counsel, for your patience and understanding moving forward, and of course, all the professionalism that you generate all, through all these meetings. So is there any other items that come before the council meeting this evening? Thanks, Matt, for everything. We stand adjourned for our next city council meeting, which is Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 5:30. Have a good evening, everyone. Good night.